Good afternoon. I think we're ready to get started. Welcome to this May 14 School Board Work Session. Thank you all for joining us. Ms. Cunningham's going to be joining us a little bit later. She's running a little bit late. And with that, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you.
The floor is all yours.
Thank you. Before we begin, and I know we have a very, very tight schedule today, but I do want to address, and I believe the media is here believing that we have something on our agenda regarding bullying, and that's on our agenda. What we have before us today is a comprehensive plan that is for our district, that is district-wide, based on discipline. It is not regarding just bullying at an incident from Adella, but I do want to speak to that. You know, we heard from community members last meeting about an issue that happened at the school, but I want to be very clear that we've investigated that issue, we've looked into that issue. Our staff, they do the very best that they can for our children each and every day, and our administrators do as well, and we appreciate their work that they're doing. I stand behind the staff 100 percent. The staff has not done anything incorrect or wrong in this instance, and that they will be able to provide what happens in the classroom on a daily basis, as well as the administrators. So the question did come about from one of the community members that spoke, is there going to be removal of any staff at that school? And at this time, there is no instance or no decision to remove any staff members from Adella Elementary, as there was nothing done incorrect. So I want to go on record, because our teachers need to know, we support the work that they're doing. They have a very heavy lift, they do a lot of work, and our administrators have a very heavy lift, and they do a lot of work. And they give the very best that they can to support our children and keep them safe each and every day. So without any further ado, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go and move forward to where we go into our budget presentation, and Mr. Perron is actually going to do the budget, items one, and he's going to do item three, because we have guests with us. Am I correct, Mr. Perron?
That is correct.
Okay.
We'll do budget second.
So we're going to combine one and three?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not combined, we just moved it.
Please just pull up these.
So that I'm not leaving it in.
Okay.
Two different items. So the first, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the workshop that I would bring to you the resolution for the issue of sales tax revenue bonds not to exceed 200 million. We talked about that, with some backup on the 150 million versus the 200 million that we talked about. There was a spreadsheet, so I answered that question for you. We'll pick any question. But I have Mike Weiner here, who is responsible for this 64-page resolution that we were to go through or to look at. He's here to summarize that in less than a minute or two, so that if you have any questions you can ask him. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thanks, Mike. I will be brief. So the bond resolution is the standard bond resolution that the district has used for its, all the prior sales tax bonds, and what we've done is to amend and restate it so that it's been brought up to date since it was originally adopted. There's been a lot of changes in the municipal market since the original resolution was done. And this resolution then authorizes up to $200 million in bonds secured by the sales tax revenues. It approves the form of a bond purchase agreement with Raymond James, Bank of America, Citigroup, and JP Morgan. It approves the form of the preliminary official statement, which is the document that's used to market and sell the bonds, and then a final official statement once the bonds are sold. There's a, it approves and delegates the form of the registrar and paying agent agreement, and does a delegation to determine whether or not insurance is going to be helpful for the interest rate to give the district the lowest interest cost, and then to enter into an insurance agreement if necessary. And it also authorizes and delegates whether or not a debt service reserve fund would be necessary in order to, again, get the best pricing on the bonds. That, in a very quick nutshell, is the resolution. I'm happy to take any questions if there are.
Mr. Wilson?
My question may be Ms. Usher, I'm not sure. And I'm still unclear about this. What do we think the total debt will be in the annual debt service when we've completed these projects?
Mr. Perron has that for the 200 billion and 150.
Yeah, there's an attachment, I believe they had it. So the, if you bond, if you bond for the 200 million, it's 17.2 million. It's a, and I apologize, it's a small spread here. And then if you do the 150.
And that's over what period of time?
15.
Fifteen years?
The length of the.
The length of all, so of the 45 million, we will have restricted 17 million of it over the length of that.
Eighteen to 200, I think.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And what was the other one?
14, 4.3 million if you did the 150.
150 is 12 million, right?
Twelve million.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 12.9. Difference is 12.9 to 17.2.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Quick question about how, we talked briefly about impact fees last time. Are they in addition to this? What's, how are the?
No, it's just the sales taxes. You can, you can use them in terms of if any qualifications pay down the debt. We're clutching the sales tax because it's a stronger revenue source, so that helps us in that in terms of the financing.
Go back to that part, but we can use them to pay?
That 17 or 12.9.
Okay.
Or a portion thereof of those annual debt service payments.
But we can probably only do that on certain projects, right? That are, that are specific, specific capacity-related projects, which I, do all of the, all of the ones we're bonding for, are all the ones we're bonding for considered capacity-related or, or none?
No.
No.
And that would be the, how we'd have to work that out.
Correct.
Back to Mr. Wilson.
So, again, this may be a question of Ms. Usher. So the impact fees are about 15 million a year, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what is the likelihood that we would use the impact fees to cover, which is what I've been suggesting all along, what is the likelihood that we would use the impact fees to cover that, the debt service? Is that likely, or what would you, do you have some estimate of what you might do with that, or some thoughts about what you might do with that?
As long as they need to, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
In other words, are we going to use, are we planning on using those impact fees for other things, or does some plan to use some of them for, for the debt service?
Mr. Perron's office did ask me about that, and with our 15 million, the only capacity project really right now that would be included is the high school. We have Devonport with some capacity. But we do have the growth happening in the Northeast, where we have to buy additional property for another elementary school, another middle, and another high. So we don't want to put all of our impact fees into the new high school.
Right.
And that will be enough either, because the high school is 80 million. So we would still have to use sales tax money.
So if we were to guess, would we say maybe 5 million a year from impact fees to cover that 17? If you're just taking a wild guess? Or 2 million? Do I sense of that?
The high school is capacity-wise, so we can use those, and that's 80.
80 million.
It's almost, it's almost half of the 200 million. So I think you'd be safe with 5, probably more. I think you could. It's just a question of, as Ms. Usher was saying, we have those other issues that we have to deal with, but we can update the board in terms of how we.
Yeah, so that, that works out to about nine and a half million dollars a year you could use, but I'm sure there are going to be other projects I want to.
Correct.
So that's probably, and that was really my question all along, because that's a fair estimate, I think. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, this is, I'm sorry.
Townsend?
I mean, this issue really comes down to whether we want to accelerate the Barso as a plan or not, really, is what it comes down to, and I think, yeah, I'm prepared to accelerate that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Fields?
I think the bottom line here is that if we don't do bonding, we won't be able to hardly get any projects done. Is that pretty much correct?
Pretty much. I mean, that, these will accelerate these to way up the list. I think, Ms. Usher, when Barso went alone, the second phase was scheduled for what year?
Way out, like 2027.
So you're saving those eight years there to get that done. So that's just a good example of moving it forward.
Any other questions on that? Mr. Townsend?
And there will be 27, 28 million dollars a year projection left over to do maintenance, to do prevent, and if the end of our capacity needs are more or less taken care of, then that allows us to, we're still spending.
Quite honestly, yes, yes. And those numbers are conservative. We think that the sales tax will grow over time like it did the last, the last 15 years. So the last thing I.
And hopefully the impact fee as well.
Correct.
I said hopefully the impact fee as well.
So I just wanted to give you a little timeline. After this meeting, either tomorrow or the 15th, we will, I'll say, the 16th will post the POS that Mike mentioned. On the 21st of May, we'll look to price the bonds, and then on the week of June 3rd, we'll have the pre-closing and closing. So then I will update the board at the June meeting as to what the results were. I'll probably send something out when we, whatever, whenever we find out and know that. So it's pretty aggressive, and we'll be moving pretty quick. But I don't want to have to hear Ms. Usher ask me one more time, Michael, when am I going to get my money disturbed?
Yeah, we're kind of interested. We've got the community asking about it, right? So.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Perron, you're still on.
Yeah, I'll say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Thank you, man. I guess you can get everyone to sign up. Just pass that on, let me know what board's. Okay. So the next item was our update on the budget. Slide over here. Mr. Pitts is on vacation this week, so, solo here. And so I wanted to give you an update, because since we last met, there was the legislative delegation, and the state finalized our budget. The first couple of slides that I'm, that we have here are, they're old, we've given these to you, but we wanted to include them to show you the history. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those. This was at the April workshop, and we looked at some different scenarios in the budget and how it affects the fund balance. On two, on this slide three, this is the new and final FEFB run. And as Jason has done in the past, he's tried to break out some of the things that are in the funding, but yet are either what we call fenced or non-discretionary. So if you look at this, the good news, bottom line, if you look all the way down to the bottom, is that we received $32 million. However, as I said, there's some fenced dollars that are earmarked for certain programs. If you look, there's the new turnaround supplemental services there in yellow, which is 5 million. The best and brightest, which is nine, 10, roughly 10 million. We lost some funding in the compression allocation, while we're extremely happy that they refunded that. It was not at the level that it was last year, so that went down close to 2 million. And then the other yellow highlight, just because it was such a drop, is digital classroom allocation. And we lost 1.5 million there. So again, we received a number, a good amount of revenue, but there are some strings attached to some of that. And so the next slide four, what Jason did was try to break out, as he's done before, to show how we get down to, we received over $200 per student. That was what was touted as, as we were getting new revenue. But when you break out all those categoricals and your fenced money, you start with the 32, you remove the best and brightest for 10, we had new categoricals total, and he summarized that, 4.7, almost 5 million. And then you get down to the end when you have, we also had the 1,400 new students, so we have growth in there of 7 million, which is very positive, and that helps us when we go to balance and hopefully, while we have expenses with those new students, hopefully they're scattered around the district, so we don't have to hire as many new staff or to quarrel with those new students, and we get to use some of those funds. But it comes down to discretionary spending of 10.6 after they had that 32. And so when we look at the 200-plus dollars per student, it really equates down to 100.85. We're not, we're not complaining about that. We needed new revenue, we got some this year, but I just wanted to show that there are ties to some of those funding that we, that we have to do, and we don't have full discretion in the spending. So on five, this is the one I want to spend a little more time on. In the earlier scenarios we showed, we had some expenses that were brought to us from public, from staff, from board members. And so I was trying to get close to a balanced budget as possible, so I took it upon myself to remove some of those things that were, I don't want to say wishless, they were nice to have, and they were good ideas, but they were quite costly. So we, if you look in the middle, after we do the fund, projected fund balance, that we're, we talked about being over, a little over 4% at the end of this year. We add that to the new revenue. And then in the middle, you see some of the items that we want to fund with these in the new budget. And so what I want to call your attention to is the third line down, we have continuing turnaround school incentives. We have a million dollars set there. We are hoping with that new categorical, the safe, the turnaround supplemental funding, that we can fund an initiative that the superintendent had prioritized regarding those schools that are coming out of turnaround, that we still want to have funds for, even though they're coming out, because it will help them sustain. And so if we can do that, I kept the number here, but if we can use those funds, we're pretty confident we can, but we have to work on this grant, it's kind of like the grant that was with safe school money and the, some of the other things we had last summer. If we can use that, then we don't have to pay for that out of general, that will come out, and that would be a zero, and it would help on the fund balance. So if you look to the bottom, what my goal was, was to get us close to where we are, saying that we're projected to end at this current year. And if you look for the total 2019 in yellow at the bottom, 911 million, almost 912 million expense. And then the ending fund balance, and then obviously, we always have our laps, we don't budget for it, but we know it's there, so we account for it, but we don't budget for it. So that's why we would have a 2.2 fund balance budgeted, but we would most likely end at 4.06, excuse me. And if we are able to achieve that 1 million, that number would look more like 4.2% fund balance. So just that amount, I just wanted to show that. So I wanted to bring what the budget would look like and the things that we could add by bringing it back to a 4%. Now that, obviously, if you look all the way back at the top, I mentioned the 45.7 million, that number could come in higher. Our current fund balance, we're projecting at 4.1 or 2. That could come in higher, so that anything higher would make the, again, be projected for 19, 20 is higher as well. So I wanted to bring that, since we've had the final legislation and the final budget numbers, and show you where we are, kind of where they bear, or not, not much added to the level of service.
Questions? Mr. Townsend?
I'm the best in brightest, and this is less a question for Mike than it is, I think, for HR or whoever. The, the way I understand this is they've given us, they've, they've taken the best and brightest plan, pushed it down to the district level, but not given us flexibility in how to use it. It's a, it's a pretty structured bonus plan. And that, as I understand this, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong on this, that fewer, fewer teachers will probably actually get it under, under the new plan, is that, is that right? Like there's a.
I'm not sure about that. We've not run the numbers yet to determine who will actually get it. Usually right around January is when we start doing the calculations for best and brightest.
I think they actually took some of the criteria out that was originally in, which I thought was going to make it available to more, but I haven't.
No, I mean, what did I?
The SAT.
Yeah, they got rid of that criteria, but they added a different criteria. So I, I think it's important that we prepare our folks to understand that that's $10 million that's not going to salaries, that's going to a bonus structure that may be less, that may touch fewer people than best and brightest did, as dumb as best and brightest was. Again, that's not, I'm not blaming anybody for that here, I'm just saying that's the reality. Secondly, just from my point of view, you know, I know our policy still says five, I'm fully in support of the four. I think as long, as long as we have an insurance hole to fill, we certainly need to be, that's essentially replenishing a reserve. We need to be replenishing that reserve, rather than just having a fund balance replenished. So those are my two thoughts.
Wendy's here for questions for best and brightest.
Yeah, best and brightest. So what they've done with the best and brightest bonuses is they've created different levels, and the first two levels, recruitment and retention, are very structured in the statute as to who can get them and under what circumstances. However, they've created this third level of recognition bonuses, which can go to either effective or highly effective instructional personnel. And that area, whatever money we have left over, the board and the superintendent create the criteria for receiving those. So if for some reason we're in a situation where we don't have a lot of schools or instructional personnel that qualify for the original bonuses and principles, we can develop our own system for getting the rest of that money out to ourselves. Yes, sir?
Ms. Portman?
And the school, in order to get that, has to move three percentage points?
In order to get the retention bonuses or the principal bonuses.
Okay.
The school has to move 3% over three years. Three years, 3% average over three years.
Which might.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, I guess just the upshot is, as soon as we can project out who's getting this, and, I mean, I think we probably should do that ahead of December to kind of think about, because this, this is a shift. I mean, in the past, the money was just mailed from Tallahassee, I, you know, as I understand it. Now, we're responsible for billing out bonus money that we don't get to give as salary to positions, like, like, you know, we can't enhance what we're paying positions. So I, so I think as soon as we can prepare our folks for what to expect from this, you know, because there, you know, some of them have been hearing about the, the, the increase and BSA and all of that, it's a little misleading. So we, we need, we need to make sure they understand what the likelihood of what they're getting is. And one of the reasons why I pushed for telling Tallahassee that we prefer salaries over bonus is precisely that reason. We need to make sure they, they understand, I think, that if we had the opportunity to just give this as recurring salary, we would do, would do so, but, but we don't. And, and I, I just think those are important things to communicate. Doesn't have to be today, but sometime in the next few weeks. Prepare them generally.
Okay. Ms. Portman?
So the superintendent's initiative on the continuing turnaround depends on the grades in June, right?
Exactly. But keep in mind that even though those schools that are fragile now, they make it, you want to, you do not want to pull away all their support, which is why we built that in.
Oh, I get it. I'm 100% on that right there. Trust me. But I was just wondering if we could get a rough, rough guess on the number of schools and what would we call support?
Well.
Are we going to hire out, like, ed directions or?
Have you stopped pulling some of the schools just?
Currently.
And this is draft, right?
I think there's 16 schools, but we also, yet also have to realize there's another program of grades that would be figured in that. And we projected the allocation to be 5 million.
All the schools together. So the way it looks, and I know Ms. Portman, you aren't here, is that we layer in additional support right now for some of them, so that you don't just strip it all away at one time, we peel back, but we want to keep those funds that'll make sure we can continue having some support there. And we don't just do it one year, I think, we try to keep some support going, and we peel off each year for them to where they, because the goal is to sustain them where they are.
Got you.
Not to have them, to make it one year and slip backwards. And so that's why we want to keep that, that box of money right there for them.
Right.
And I want to call it that, and have it there. And that's why Mike always puts it in the budget, so that we make sure it's accounted for.
Oh, I'm 110% on that. I'm just curious, is what we call support at the school?
It, it could be anywhere from where we layer in additional coaches, to sometimes it's incentives that we layer into there. It, it just depends on what we're actually taking and putting into some of them.
But it doesn't necessarily mean we'll be paying that out to a third-party?
No. Not necessarily, no.
Like ed directions or?
No. You have additional support in a lot of those schools right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Miller?
I have something not to do with best and brightest, but the avid and grade, grade recovery allotment here, is that to grow that program in other schools, or is that to sustain?
Not big.
You talking about on down the agenda item?
Yes.
No, I'm not on the agenda item, I'm still under.
No, but.
It's a budget. Is that allotment to grow avid into other schools or to sustain?
Some of it would be to sustain, one of the things that we started funding it out of another area, and to try to create a line item to budget that each year. But we would be adding, I think it was three more schools, Ms. Miller, and sustain the elements.
Are they also turnaround schools, or do we have that in other, do we have that, the ones I visited are turnaround schools?
If there is a correlation there between probably the need and the part of the instructional strategy would be the most successful, but no, ma'am, that's not, that's not a given that that would be the case. We have some schools that are not in turnaround that have students that really would benefit from that.
Thank you.
Wouldn't that be?
Ms. Portman?
But, Mr. Hill, Auburndale High School's avid, right? And that's why we started at Stan Ball.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, okay. Just making sure.
Right. So we saw a need to that, so. So one of the areas that we're starting to look into, that we would be starting this coming year, would be elementary avid.
Oh.
And so of course, the Peter pattern there for Auburndale would be great with Auburndale Central, and there'll be one other elementary that we're looking at. So again, looking at where it would be the most successful Peter pattern, and where the biggest possibility of impact.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Perron. Next what you're going to hear is Mr. Hill and the team, as the board has asked us to begin looking at a comprehensive behavior plan. This plan that you're going to hear from the team is they looked at all the areas that they need to incorporate. I do want to say the plan is very fluid, so it's things that we see we need to tweak, change throughout the year. It's a fluid plan that we will. We're actually going to, after today, we're going to go out and they're going to make sure they solicit not only just district staff, but principals, teachers throughout the years we work on this plan. This is not just a plan that's implemented, created, implemented, and that's it. It's going to be fluid to where it can change at any point and have additions or deletions, or even just enhancements in certain areas. And you'll hear that today from them, so I want to make sure that they, go ahead. Mr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bird, and board. The plan that is being presented to you today is designed to be comprehensive, purposeful, and intentional. And as Ms. Bird said, that while we are moving toward finalizing some of the components of it and putting it together, we will continue to utilize a process that will allow us to make adjustments in real time to ensure that over time, the plan remains relevant and sustainable. At this time, we have our school discipline and student behavior response team with us, and I'd like for them to come forward and introduce themselves to the board.
They're all in the room.
They're in the room. They, they, hopefully, they're in the room. We're here. There you go. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your support.
So you have Brett Butler, I see, and Brett with discipline?
Yep. Brett Butler, Director of Discipline. My area of expertise is school discipline. I will be the point of contact for the regional response teams, and I'll work collaboratively with the principal and Mr. Maxwell to determine the supports, to be able to respond to the individual students' needs and their scores.
Okay.
Okay, bye. Good afternoon, I'm Jim Maxwell. I will bring a broad understanding of both behavior and mental health. And I have had considerable experience implementing both behavior and mental health programs into the school system. My role for this team will be to facilitate the plan, so if something doesn't work, I want to know about it and provide oversight. I'll also be able to collaborate with Mr. Butler to ensure the schools receive support that's both comprehensive and effective. Another main goal of mine is to successfully integrate school personnel with the district and contracted personnel, which you'll hear more about, that doesn't happen automatically. So something that needs to be worked on, and that'll be part of my role too, as well as monitoring how we're doing and making regular reports to the district level team.
Hi, my name is Dr. Point Seton Tillman, and my expertise is in working with teachers and administrators who support students with disabilities. And my role in this team will be to support schools through in-class observations, engaging students with poverty in mind, the CHAMP behavior model that they were trained on last school year, and also collaborating with this team to see how we can enhance supports and create environments at the school level that is conducive to all students' learning.
Hello, I'm Dr. Lori Allen, I am senior coordinator of professional development. My expertise is building strong teacher-student relationships and encouraging social and emotional supports in the classroom. My role in this committee is to make contact and work with principals, to offer supports for professional learning for their teachers and things like conscious discipline, understanding poverty, children that are at risk, emotional poverty, and Marzano's conditions for learning.
My name's Deborah Battisher, I'm the senior coordinator for PBIS. My areas of expertise are multi-tiered systems of support and positive behavior interventions. And my role on the team will be helping schools strengthen their multi-tiered systems of support and working with teams to build stronger capacity.
Did we get it, everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Appreciate it, thank you. We are very thankful for this team, they put in a tremendous amount of work, time, energy, and effort into the development of this plan, and it certainly has been a privilege and a pleasure to work with them, and we look forward to continuing that. Just as Ms. Bird said, in regards to the plan being fluid, the team will be fluid as well as we will eventually. Well, we will continue to look for key components to add, or key team members to add in order to enhance our team as necessary or when needed. So the screen that you have before you there, the why, we think it's always important to answer that question anytime you engage in a significant endeavor. And so the answer to that is because we identified some significant needs that need to be addressed within our discipline system. And we recognize that it is our responsibility and our mission to create a safe and caring environment that provides students, teachers, and all stakeholders an excellent school experience. And I want to draw your attention to the term stakeholders, because when we use that term in this context, we're talking about all school-based personnel, our entire support staff, all those from the district level to support and do all the hard work to support our schools, in addition to our parents, our families, and our community members. So we believe that as we engage in this process, it's going to have a positive impact on not only our teachers, I mean, students, obviously first and foremost our students, our teachers, and all those who support them. And looking at the observable trends, we noticed that there has actually been a decrease in student discipline behaviors over the past several years. And in that observation, we, even though we've noticed that and recognized that in our data trend, in our data for our discipline data, we've also had the opportunity to talk to a number of our professionals throughout our system. And when we've talked with PEA, Hope Education Association, ASBA, our Association of School-Based Administrators, and school-based personnel, they have all identified school discipline, disruptive behavior, and intensive student behavior as one of the most challenging issues facing our district. So obviously, we recognize that these behaviors are negatively impacting some of our students, our staff, and schools. One of the things that I want to make sure that we clearly articulate is that while the overall numbers for student discipline for all students may be trending downward, and the behaviors that we're discussing today in regards to the highly disruptive and intensive student behaviors is increasing, that total number of students is still relatively small. Having said that, the frequency and the nature of the behaviors is what's creating a situation where we must provide additional support and supports that are effective in helping them with those behaviors. So we know that if we enhance our current system of responding to the behavior, we believe we will be able to make a positive impact on this, on these areas, or in these areas, rather. You look at our theory of action, the way we are approaching this plan is provide a comprehensive and systematic plan that addresses the social, emotional, learning needs of our students and provide supports for our teachers and school-based personnel. And I think that's very important that we highlight that. We certainly want our students to succeed, but we also recognize that we have to provide our teachers, our school-based personnel, the supports necessary to help them to succeed. Our intent is to reduce highly disruptive and intensive student behaviors, and we believe that we can accomplish it by the following. Reinforcing positive behavior, we want to help teach replacement behavior, support that process. And then it's imperative that we provide a full continuum of supports and placements for all students. Continuing with our theory of action, once we strengthen and improve our multi-tiered system of support for behavior, we believe it will certainly result in improving our ability to provide our students and staff a safe and caring school environment. We believe it will strengthen conditions for student learning. And then we believe it will increase the likelihood that all stakeholders will have an excellent school experience. Taking a look at our goals, these are the three overarching goals that we've established for the plan. First and foremost is to improve the district's immediate and systematic response to students that are exhibiting highly disruptive behavior and/or intensive behaviors. This is our top priority. We must respond to our schools quickly, efficiently, and effectively. Secondly, we want to continue to build and improve our system so that we can provide our schools the ability to grow their capacity and build their capacity. And then the third is we want to expand the district continuum of behavioral and mental health supports and placements. It is our mission, the best way for me to say this, is it is mission critical for us to improve our multi-tiered system of support.
So when we look at our current teaching framework, what we do currently in our school district, we really have confirmed that Marzano Teaching Map is our teaching framework. And one of the elements that is in this teaching framework, again, this is not new, this is the way we approach teaching. We've been working on and strengthening this framework for the last three years. That one element that we're actually referring to is, they're at the top of the screen, where it talks about the conditions for learning. And I think we can all appreciate, whether it's day one with the teacher or day one with the school, that it's mission critical for the teacher to be able to have the conditions for learning for the best outcome for both students and teachers. So really, the question is how can we strengthen those conditions for learning for what's best for all students and staff? When we look at this particular situation, what we wanted to look at, when the team looked at it, was we actually wanted to look at our MTSS tiers of support within our school district and actually do a root cause analysis of what's causing or attributing to the situation for both students and staff. So in terms of MTSS and in terms of what were our current conditions, we looked at each one of these situations for what was the contributing factors, and then we wanted to look at the most intense, critical behaviors within this issue. So if we're looking actually at the MTSS triangle, what we realize is that what Mr. Hill actually alluded to is that for our core, what we call our tier-one instruction, the majority of our schools, the majority of our classrooms, the majority of our students are being very successful in their classrooms. In other words, we have a good, solid core behavior system that's in place at the majority of these situations. And when we analyze it even further, when you talk about a tier-two intervention, that's when it's going up to that second level. Again, for the majority of our students, they respond positively when we talk about shaping their behavior and changing it, some of those student outcomes. So when we're looking at the actual plan itself, we're actually moving on to the, what we're, the action that we're getting ready to talk about, is we were looking at this and we're talking about it in terms of, we actually have a tier-three issue that's going on with student behaviors, and what we're needing to do to support the schools and the students at the schools. So you're actually wanting to respond to a tier-three intervention for the most intense students that we have. So when we're considering that, again, going back through the, well, how did we actually analyze and how would you look at it when you're looking at it from a school standpoint and district standpoint? Again, our core, our tier-one, 80% of our students are being successful with it, responding very well. Tier-two, again, you're doing well, 15% that maybe are having a discipline problem. They respond very appropriately when we put those responses in place. But the number of students that we're talking about is really, is less than 1% of our population that we have that are really struggling with, again, the response that we need to be able to provide. So when you're talking about the team up there in the upper left-hand corner, it's really about the district being able to provide the support to the school to strengthen their tier-three interaction, their tier-three supports, where that they can actively work with a leadership team at the school. So when we're looking at it, a lot of times, I know there's, whether it's a board member or a district staff member, you know, we feel like a lot of times we're having these calls, but again, you've got to consider that the majority of our classrooms, well managed, the majority of our students are really responding well. It's just we have an acute problem at the very top of this tier-three situation that we need to be able to build capacity within the district to help support the schools. That was one of the things that we kind of shifted and realized pretty quick when we got to looking at it. So how will we do that? One of the things that we're putting together is actually a regional response team. In other words, what we wanted to do was be able to work as a team with principals and regionals. And by doing this as a team and regional team, what we found is a district, with a district the size of ours, 100,000, 105,000 kids and 160 sites, you've got to be able to break it down. And when we create the teams with regionals, we found that to be the most effective because then they have a personal relationship with the principal, they have a personal relationship with the school, they actually have a better understanding. So what we would be doing would be creating these regional response teams. And on these regional response teams, these teams would be responding specifically to a regional assistant superintendent's schools. They would not be responding to this issue district-wide. What that'll do is that'll actually help have some ownership in this situation. And if you look up there, one of the things you realize right off the bat, let's just talk about a couple of people that would be on that team, a board certified behavior analyst, a behavior specialist, a positive behavior interventionist, a school social psychologist, mental health. What you realize is we've actually gathered these resources from different departments to say, hey, look, when we get in one of these situations and we would call you to the school, you're an expert in this area. A lot of times what we found is that we're just deploying resources, but it's not strategic and it doesn't have the ability for us to be able to understand the acuteness at the school. So by putting our district resources on a team, it gives us some ownership at that team. It helps us to understand where we've been successful, where we need to layer on some more. And we're going to actually be able to determine where the most effective responses are occurring and how we can support our schools the best and our students. So how will this work? One of the shifts that we've made, and again, what we've been doing is learning from what we've had going on this year, listening to the stakeholders, seeing what they're telling us is not working, and making sure we're making those adjustments. So the first thing that I want to kind of draw your attention to would be where, it's actually in green up there on the screen where it says the school calls for support. One of the things that we've realized is that we have, whether it's a principal or an assistant principal, they feel like they're having to call multiple places. Key in this particular plan, there's one phone number you call, there's one person you call. I think that's really, really key, because that way we're strategic about how we're deploying these resources. The second step that we would do, actually as it comes in, and right now, what Mr. Butler was alluding to, that he would probably field some of these calls, would be, we need to determine now, what is the immediacy of this situation? Do we have 30 minutes to get somebody out there, or is it something that we have an hour or two? Or is it a situation that we need to just make sure we have somebody on site tomorrow? Again, being able to determine the needs and being, having these resources by region, we'll be able to respond more immediate and make sure that we're more strategic in deploying the right resources. Third thing, this is totally new, is that we're going to build a system to track this data and these calls that come in. So we're literally going to have and create a discipline response tracking mechanism. Why this is so important is because as soon as, like Mr. Butler would get that call, he would actually log into the system and actually enter into, we've had one of these incidences, and it would automatically email the principal, the regional, and Mr. Butler and Mr. Maxwell. And every time we work on this situation with this student, with that school, we'll actually be logging those interventions in place. What that allows us to do is actually tell where we need to actually move supports to, where we're being the most successful, and maybe where we need to shift supports to. I think this will give us the pieces that we've really been needing, and because it's coming into one call center, then we know that the principals don't have to go and call all over. They call one number, we're able to deploy those resources, and we're able to track the effectiveness. The third thing that I want to make sure that we're looking at is when that call comes in, the question really is, well then, you know, well, how do you determine which way it goes? Should it go to Brett Butler on down the chain, where we're actually looking at environment on the left? In other words, do we need to help support a school with maybe a tier-two or a tier-three supports within a classroom? Or is it an acute situation on the right where Mr. Maxwell would have to deploy teams to work on the social, emotional issues within students? One of the things that we recognize right off, when we're talking about situations like that, a majority of these are student situations where we need to be able to deploy a professional in there that can help meet the needs of the students. That's really Mr. Maxwell's wheelhouse. But also, at the same time, sometimes we need to strengthen the environment. In other words, for the majority of the students at a school, they may be being very successful with what we have going on as we move up and down the halls, as we get off the bus, as we go into a classroom. For the majority of the students, it looks like it's being very successful. But sometimes when you have students with a very acute problem and you introduce them into what seemingly is working, the things that set him or her off is different than what sets off for everybody else. So sometimes you're working on a student problem, at the same time you're strengthening the environment. Two totally different issues and two totally different sets of specialists that would work on that. One is specifically to individual students, and one is very specific to the environment and how we can strengthen that. So when we're thinking about that, it's real important that we realize that we're going to have the ability to have a one-call place, we're going to have the ability to deploy resources and track those resources, know where it's being effective, and know where we need to strengthen, and then make sure that when we're looking at areas that we're learning from, how successful we're being in being able to redeploy resources where we need. And the next thing we want to talk about is actually how we're going to be able And the next thing we want to talk about is actually how we're going to be able to reorganize our positions to be able to do this.
So obviously, to make this plan work, we've got to have all the resources available, and we're going to pull from various funding sources, but primarily our IDA funding grant and our mental health allocation to deal with behavior and mental health, of course. You saw a couple of new positions on one of the previous slides, we have the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Facilitator positions. Those would be primarily funded out of the mental health allocation. And then we've developed a proposed job description for a behavior specialist, which is a new title and new, both of those are actually going to be later in the agenda today, we're scheduled to review those. But those would be paid for out of IDA, and they'd be on both kinds of sides of that chart that was up there. We also know that, you know, while we have a lot of capacity in our district and great staff and personnel and they work, you know, work very, very hard, there's a level of expertise that we don't have in, within our, in our department, so we do need to continue our contract and services. So our Winter Haven Behavioral Health Contract that we already have and have had for many, many years, that provides mental health services for students with IEPs will continue. That's on tonight's board agenda. We're currently in discussions with Alternative Behavior Concepts with Keith and Cheryl Jordan, they've been, you know, part of our team for many, many years here in Polk County, and so we're in contract negotiations again with them and moving that forward. They'll continue because they're a great resource for us as a district. Then we have EnvO Healthcare Associates, and they're actually here, their reps are here with us today, in case some questions or anything comes up, but we already have five of their board-certified behavior analysts and twenty of their registered behavior technicians in our district. We're increasing that next year up to ten BCBA's and maintaining the twenty RBTs. That is on tonight's board agenda, and I mentioned that in a previous work session presentation for that contract. But then we'll be adding a brand-new contract with them that will help us formalize and strengthen our current intensive behavior units that we started this year at the elementary level, and then expand those to the secondary level at some of our alternative ed schools. So we'll be doing that through the IMPACT program, and that would be paid for out of the mental health allocation as well. That contract is proposed, is for approval at the June board meeting. But to give you a little bit more information about the IMPACT program, because it is a new piece, IMPACT stands for EnvO Multidisciplinary Program to Address Childhood Trauma. It's a great acronym that, you know, we love in our world as acronyms. The IMPACT program uses an approach to treat students with mental health diagnoses, intensive behavioral challenge, and social, emotional needs, which of course is a great profile for the students that we're dealing with and talking about. They have a recognition and a focus on severe implications of childhood ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, which are things such as emotional, physical, sexual abuse, neglect, parent separation or divorce, students who are witnesses to domestic violence, mental illness, incarceration, students that are dealing with the death of family members, substance abuse, or any kind of complications related to poverty. So when we're talking about students that are suffering from the implications of those adverse childhood experience or ACEs, those are the things that we're talking about, which definitely impact a student's behavior and can lead to those disruptive and intensive behaviors we deal with. The IMPACT program and the contract you'll see will provide staff for these five elementary units and five more secondary units, and they will staff us with a classroom teacher, an RBT, a classroom aide, which is a paraprofessional, a licensed social worker, mental health counselor, and a board-certified behavior analyst for each of those units. One of the things we have struggled with this year is staffing our units with personnel as far as teachers and paraprofessionals. So this will be a way for us to address that issue, and the one thing that's really good about the IMPACT program and what EnvO does is these team members train and build and do everything as a team. They do this in other states and other districts in Florida, and it's been very successful, so we're excited about moving forward with that with them. The other piece that we've talked about is our need to strengthen our continuum of support at the highest level with our more restrictive placements. We've talked over the years, you know, we implemented the elementary IBUs, we have our elementary best students, which are alternatives for students who commit disciplinary offenses. We utilize home instruction as a service for students that have IEPs when they can't necessarily be as successful in the school environment, and so we provide services at home for short periods of time while we develop plans for them to return to the school setting. But one thing that we've been exploring and continue to work on are opportunities for day treatment centers and residential studies for our students. So we've been talking with various agencies, various groups, having some meetings, learning about what do we have available here in Polk County, or in neighboring districts or across the state in those types of environments. We work with Peace River, with Winter Haven Beha-, with Winter Haven Bay Care, and our local review team for Youth at Risk. There's processes that are required for students to go in those settings, they should be receiving not only behavioral support and mental health support, but they have to have been receiving psychiatric treatment, lots of wraparound types of services before you can get to the level of need for day treatment and residential. So those are some ongoing conversations, but we are moving those forward and should be bringing some things to you in the future on some decisions on those types of opportunities for our students.
We take a look at our next steps, what we started with May. We obviously are engaged in the process to renew some contracts for the behavioral piece, the mental health piece, Winter Haven Behavioral, EnvO contract. We are, the regionals are working with us to finalize school locations for the IMPACT program and our IBUs. And in addition to that, we are meeting with and working with those folks who can provide potential, excuse me, potential day treatment and residential settings. In June, we will present our plan to principals and assistant principals at the leadership retreat. We will continue with ongoing professional development for school-based leaders, and, you know, we focus a lot of attention, we've discussed this, we focus a lot of attention, and so we should, on academic achievement and working and strengthening those processes. But we also recognize the importance of making sure that we can provide those outstanding conditions for learning. Strengthening bullying prevention and response procedures for all district school-based personnel, we have plans. We've started discussing some preliminary pieces on that, the things that we've learned this year, areas that we've identified for improvement and growth. Reorganizing supports and aligning resources is a very strategic part of what we do, whether it's personnel or shifting resources. We are going to create and implement the EnvO contract, or we're in that process, for the IMPACT programs. In July, we've developed, the team has developed the Summer Academy, Engage Behavior, Ongoing Professional Development, it's very exciting, and it's an opportunity for schools as they are looking to build and strengthen their MTSS teams and support their teachers and support staff, it's a great opportunity for them. We are going to work with our regionals and this team, which is, to shorten it, we just call it the Behavior Response Team, Student Behavior Response Team, to make sure that we're calibrating our team and we're on the same page, we understand what we're doing, when we're doing it, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. So there's a process of ongoing calibration that will take place. We have the EnvO introductory and ongoing meetings with schools. Would you like to speak to them a little bit and give them more detail on that?
We have a plan, we learned kind of this year as EnvO started doing some more work in our schools, that it really works if we go in and have an introductory meeting with the personnel, with the principal, the assistant principals, teachers, whatever staff they've determined with our team, to talk about roles, responsibilities, how they function, things like that. And it just helps to kind of set the path for how they'll work together in the school, and if issues arise, how they address those and things like that. So that's what that is.
This year was my first year to have the opportunity to sit in on some of those meetings, and we've learned quite a bit this year in working through those processes. We're going to enhance professional development with Transportation Services and our ESE Department, and then we're going to establish biweekly meetings to monitor the overall plan. So this team has made the commitment to put in the time, energy, and effort to meet biweekly to monitor the plan, look at the data, measure the progress, and then adjust as needed. We feel that's a very, very important part of what we are going to do. And I might add that, again, going back to what Ms. Byrd started with, this plan, while we have finalized components and parts of it, it's still a work in progress, and there are still other professionals in our system that will be joining us and bringing on board their expertise to ultimately and eventually really utilize all of our resources in a very systematic way to have a positive impact on our schools.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions. Ms. Portman?
Mr. Hill, thank you. And thank you for listening to the stakeholders, because I think this probably may have originated from our October meeting, which I always try to email you ahead of time so there are no surprises, which I didn't email you this time because I saw it. So, that was my heart. I did not realize I was speaking to Lori at a thing we were together, and I didn't realize that folks didn't realize why I am so into this. I lost a kid to suicide that I taught. She did not know that. Like, he was there one day and not the next.
Right.
I'll never get over it. So I just want to make that perfectly clear, you know, that that is, and I, as a classroom teacher, was not trained to look for anything or whatever, but, you know, that's why it's near and dear to my heart. So I'm just going to kind of go through this. First off, recognizing that we have work to do is beautiful in itself, and I appreciate all of y'all. If, on the theory of action, wait a minute, I just needed a little bit of clarification. On observable trends, the decrease in student discipline behaviors, those are the reported behaviors, right?
Ms. Byrd.
Okay.
We looked at a lot of different data, but the data that we could say for certain that we know we could get at some of it was difficult to amass, to get a baseline, that came from the discipline data, Ms. Byrd.
Yes, sir. And just having been fresh out of a classroom, I heard many times that teachers' referrals, et cetera, were turned back, not accepted, that kind of thing, which, the point I'm trying to make is that's how we kind of identify what's going on in a classroom. You know, so I think if we could allow teachers to get some closure on those instead of just, "Did you call the parent?" Kind of thing.
Certainly, that's an area we want to strengthen and improve.
I just thought, and then a theory of action provides comprehensive, I love that part. And I know, we all know this, but I just want to say it for the record, starts in elementary school. And social skills, you know, back in the day, I mean, I still have the districts, I don't know which one of you nice people made those, but the big character words, and we did one a week or a month or something. And those are on my bulletin board the entire time I taught, yes, and you could just point to it and remind them. Because I know I've heard from teacher friends that, you know, and I'm sure the phones and all the social media has negative impact, but then the increase, decrease, the testing, you know, kind of punishment that a lot of teachers feel are kind of taking the joy out of education, if you will. Let's see, I only have a couple more, be patient, please. Improve the district's immediate and systematic response under goals. I guess that's where we're going to have this as a fluid model, and we figure out how we're going to do that.
Ms. Byrd, and that response team and the way they designed that team, one of the things that school-based personnel from principals, I'm sure, to teachers and all, they want a more immediate response and a more empathic response to understand their needs.
Right. And then the how, the Marzano, I don't even want to get into the Marzano.
That will be scheduled, we'll schedule it.
Oh, yeah, because, but, you know, I read this a couple times, and I'm like, these are like beginning teacher 101 things. You know, establish rules and procedures, recognize and adhere to those, you know, and we have beginning teachers, I know Ms. Porteous is working diligently to keep them and has employed really good people to try to get them to do these things that we all maybe is, don't realize that it's harder for some than others to do that, and they do need that extra support. And of course, sometimes we start school year with subs that come in and out all year long, and they're never going to have rules and procedures or, you know, and sometimes that's how these kids slip through, is my point.
Ms. Byrd, that's.
You know, and again, if we could.
That's an area that we have to contend with and work on.
I get it. And then, you know, I met with Dr. Maxwell, Dr. Sankey, Dr. Aix when I first got on the board. Remember, we met right over in the superintendent's conference room? And I was just so excited because they were kind of trying to share with me this thought process then, and just having that team for an area that is just dedicated to those kids, you know, I just love the whole idea. And of course, we know that we kind of lose them in middle school, and that's where we really need our counselors to be able to counsel. You know, so I just want to thank you, thank you. I just, I don't know, it looks like you have really thought this out, and I hope that I'm allowed to help and work with you. I really do. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
My list may be a little longer, I apologize in advance. The one thing that Ms. Portman mentioned that I also hear a lot from teachers in the classroom as well as administrators, the decrease, the decrease you may see in student discipline is because it's under-reported. There, we need to, I don't know why there's a misconception, or maybe there is a connection to some kind of review and/or recognition a school would get if they had too many referrals. We have schools that are under-reporting, and they believe it's because of, you know, would harm them either with some kind of recognition or maybe as a review, excuse me, of their leadership staff. How do we get to, I mean, is that true one? And if it's not, how do we get the message out that we need to be very open with our classroom teachers that they can report these discipline issues? And sometimes I'm hearing of them getting to the office and then disappearing, so I'm saying, you know, document with pictures. You've got to, we've got to be able to track this kind of negative behavior that's very intensive in some situations. Is there some kind of, are they being penalized, or is there something that the schools will feel by having a larger amount of referrals than whoever's decided?
No, it is not our, Ms. Byrd, you know, in her leadership, is very clear that we are to support our schools and support our personnel. So while school-based personnel sometimes may feel that, it could be self-imposed, maybe some experiences in the past, I can tell you under Ms. Byrd's leadership, we support our schools. So what we need to do is really look at that, because there may be some pockets of that, or maybe some pockets where it doesn't exist, but if we can get a handle on that, then we certainly can address it, and I made a note of it. I think what happens sometimes is it's so big and such a broad topic that you really have to delve into it and see exactly what's occurring. I'll give you a quick example. In schools, you have a couple systems running. You have the discipline system, which is the referral system, and you have a behavior management system that school leaders use to help teachers with the basic management of those pieces, and so, and tracking all those things, it can get a little complex, and there may be some miscommunication and misunderstanding there, that may be one example. I think the other thing is, I think now that Ms. Byrd has established her leadership in our district, we are working hard to dispel the myth that it's not, dispel the myth that you can't ask questions, because it might reflect poorly on you if you don't know, or come share things that you feel for come share things that you feel for some reason would put you in a bad light. So, we will work hard to dispel that myth and start talking and encouraging our leaders and our school-based folks to share openly. We want to work with them. We're not fault-finders, we're really about finding solutions and working together collaboratively to build solutions.
Because I appreciate that, and that's what I kept, you know, reminding these people, but I don't know if it's a state recognition or something they felt like they cannot have referrals over a certain number.
Well, you know, it's one of those things, I think if the board and those that support our schools realize that, hey, if there's an uptick and looks like, the data looks like it's increasing, then we need to analyze the data to ensure that it might not be, it may be a change in state reporting, it may be the way we might be reporting differently, or we might be improving our reporting processes. So, I think it's a valid point, it's a good point, and we certainly something we have to work at to improve.
Thanks. I want to touch on the dollars really quickly. IDA grant, you know, obviously brings in money for students with disabilities, so we're renewing 1.9 million from IDA, and additional to be announced or to be determined for alternative behavior concepts from IDA, and the behavior specialist of another 392,000 from IDA. These services will go for students who not only have disabilities, like I'm assuming you might get a behavior specialist for a child who doesn't have a cognitive disability or a disability. We have very limited resources with IDA, and I want to make sure that we're providing, we're using them the most effectively. These intensive behavior units that were started in elementary school, I think that was a great thing to do. I can tell you, most principals did not know they existed, and we had so few students access them, maybe because they didn't know how to request for that kind of support. We also spent a lot of money on behavior supports for those very few students in those units. So, I would just, I would like to follow the dollars as they are spent to make sure we're utilizing IDA, and even if it's used across the board for all responses to students with and without disabilities in the most effective manner. You're adding, I hear that you're adding intensive behavior units to middle schools, which I think is a plus. We have no alternative behavior school after we had closed, for students with disabilities, we have no alternative behavior site after countywide closed, and the issues we're having is those students returning back into the classroom, 80% included, without that level of support, who need mental health and/or behavior supports. So, that's the concerns from the community, how, or from the classroom teachers, how do we support these students that we have not had training in to deal with some of these significant behaviors? And if we have intensive behavior units in the elementary schools, I think we need to make it clear to those principals the how to get there if that's what's needed, because I think you'll see more of those used once they understand the process. When you mentioned home instruction, home-based learning isn't, I mean, wasn't designed for intensive behavior. Polk County does not have residential placements. I mean, I work on my other life as a disability, we have very few intensive behavior, even group homes, there is no residential placement in Polk County for students, and that's a problem, because at the state level, they explain it away as, well, those students would go into some kind of alternative setting. We do not have it here. So, then we'll talk about moving kids outside of the county for these very intensive behaviors, and I think we just have to be aware of what that would look like, movement of child outside of his county, but some of these students have very intensive mental health issues and/or behavior. Home instruction, you may get three or four hours a week with a teacher, and I would hate to put behavior issues back home for home support, mainly because a lot of parents can't stay home while they're working to help monitor that child, and we may lose them through those home-based, providing home-based services. But I have heard that it being suggested. I would just be very wary of sending kids home for home-based instruction. That's usually medically fragile students is how that program.
Can I?
Sure.
Okay. Let's go back for a minute, just to clarify a couple things. On the IDA funding allocation, 15% of our grant is able to be used towards the prevention of students being identified as a student with a disability. So, preventative measures, MTSS, PBIS, all those types of things, you're allowed to use up to 15, some districts actually are required to use 15% of their funding for that. We are not one of those districts, but you can elect to do that, so as far as using the IDA money for some students who may not already be identified as a student with a disability and have an IEP, we are okay to do that, and that's, I just want to make sure that that's understood. On the slide, and Ms. Miller's completely right, we actually do not have any residential facilities or homes in Polk County for the students that we're talking about. There are group homes, but those students that are in group homes are typically students with more cognitive severe disabilities, they're placed there typically through the Agency for Persons with Disabilities or some other social agencies, they're not placed there by school districts or school systems. What we're talking about are settings that we would be recommending a student needs after they've been through every type of service and any type of opportunity that we have to provide them educational services, and they just really require a more restrictive setting, and that would be in combination with social services, parents, hospitals, psychiatrists, any of those types of things. There's so many layers you have to get through before you even get to a student in a residential, and it would be, I wouldn't expect us to even have more than five total at maximum in a residential if we ever had that. But it is something that we need to at least have open as an opportunity if we do have some. And then, as far as the home instruction, there's a lot of, I've been dealing with this for many, many years, the word "home" and when it comes to instruction or services or whatever, is often confused because there's home instruction, there's home education, there's homeschooling, there's hospital homebound, and all four of those are different services. Home instruction, as we're defining it and talking about it in this presentation, is an IEP service. So, an IEP team would determine that this student who's displayed some type of behavior or some type of incident, in order for us to provide a plan that is most appropriate for them and services at their school, we need to have some time, and IDA allows us to do this under federal law, for that student to receive services at home for an interim period of time while the school or the district determines what can we better do to support them and serve them back in a school setting, and then we ease them back into that. Some students do remain on home instruction for extended periods of time. We've got, I won't obviously say which student, but we do have one, actually a couple, that have been on it and been successful on it, and it's been determined by the IEP team in conjunction with the parents that it's appropriate for them. They're doing okay on that. We have others that we just do it for a short period of time so that the school has time to have a breather for a minute so that they can collect things. We can, as a district, determine what resources are going to be in place to make sure that everybody's safe, number one, the child and then everybody around them. So, what this description on here for home instruction is for students in those types of situations. Hospital homebound agreed is for students who have medical types of disabilities, they're confined to the home where the hospital is dictated by a medical doctor. There are some medical doctors that say, based on a student's behavior and the treatment that they're providing to them as a physician, they need to stay at home, and they identify that, and so some of them do receive hospital homebound services for behavior, but that's because in order to receive that, you have to have doctor's authorization for that. So, I just wanted to clarify some of those because it gets a little confusing sometimes.
And the last thing, overall implementation, I know that Jim Maxwell's office works very hard with mental health piece, but a lot of the stuff we do is reactive because we don't know what's happening, and we have, a lot of these support people that we have have to be invited onto the school site to help with any concerns. Is the regional, who will be the point person to make sure these schools are requesting? You know, if their school that's had zero requests for support, then they need to be red flagged, as someone needs to be able to go there and decide if supports are being delivered.
That's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. Our regionals do an incredible amount of work. We work diligently to try to free up their time to make sure they're in schools, they know their schools, they know what's going on. One of the things that we're going to do next year is look at that schedule and continue to work so that we can minimize some of the barriers for them, that they spend a large amount of time in their schools. So, they know their principals, and they know what's going on, and I'll give you an example, the way I became really familiar with this issue at the beginning of the year was basically on my morning phone calls to my regionals. We got an issue at such-and-such school, you know, we're looking at, we're trying to get resources, we're working with Dr. Sankey and her team, and so, I think we need to communicate extremely effectively to principals and assistant principals. We need to make sure that we calibrate that team and connect that calibration to the schools so they understand that we are there to support them and make sure that we are there to meet their needs. So, we need to know what's going on, and the good news is, the regionals are doing that, and we're going to, part of this plan is to free up additional time for them to be, have more access to their schools. Matter of fact, I'm having them next year look at the percentage of time to do a work study, but it was high this year. They're either immediately involved in the schools, directly rather, involved in the schools, or indirectly. The majority of the time, we want to curtail to deal with that specific issue. And I think communicating the plan effectively is going to be very, very important, and then that seven times seven approach to communication, it's not enough to send out a Friday memo the first week of the year, this is how you access, this is what you can do, and then come back in July and go, why weren't you accessing what you need? We have to continually keep that communication in front of them, and that's something that I think we can certainly do a better job of, and we'll plan, I think the word you said earlier was, you know, reactive as opposed to proactive, and so, the intent of this process is to be very proactive in engaging these situations.
I appreciate that, and I think that that's the key, what you mentioned, excuse me, because so many, if I even reminded in those supports, they had, they would say they did not, you know, they didn't know about them, they didn't know how to access them, so if they're being reminded on how to access them multiple times a year, that can no longer be what we're given.
Right.
Tracking data, because this is fluid and it's going to change, is there any way for the board to access, to track data, or for there to be updates on how this is working as it is implemented?
Yes, ma'am. When our system's kicked off in August, I would like that by the first quarter, we'd be able to bring to you the data, number of instances, and be able to look at it together. Of course, you know, we wouldn't be down to the student level, but we'd be able to look at the grandeur level of it, you know, at a regional or at a school level, but absolutely, that's the purpose of, you know, we got to know where it's working, where it's not.
And the last thing is, you talked about a very small percentage of behaviors, and it's true, but with school choice and magnet and charter, our neighborhood schools have higher than what I would call a natural setting of significant behavior issues, because choice is limited for those students who display those kinds of behaviors. So, I'd want to target those schools first with these intensive supports because they're more than likely to have a higher number of those students.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fortney?
I'm sorry, on how creating impact units, recognition and focus on the severe implication, about how many kids are we talking there for the ACE kids approximately?
Well, it's not an ACE kid, it's a different.
I'm talking about kids in general, like about how many kids do we think are experiencing those things you listed?
Adverse childhood experiences?
Yes.
Well, it depends.
Even a percentage of our population?
Over 20% of people in this room have experienced at least one adverse childhood experience.
Wow. Yeah, and then, so, the classroom for emotional and behavior support, I'm just trying to remember back, I think it was before Superintendent Byrd, I know it was before me, there were some schools that got shut down, and then we, I believe I was at a work session, and you came up with the idea of getting these behavior units. Is this going to replace those behavior units, this, or is this in, like the one at Floral Avenue and?
No, the one at Floral Avenue would actually be one of these classrooms, it would continue, because they're beautiful, the way they run there has, they've been our success story this year.
Okay, I'm trying to kind of get in my mind what this is.
Yeah, so we'll build those out based on what we've learned from both positive and other experiences.
Okay, so, these are, so, the impact units.
The classrooms for emotional and behavior support are the impact units, they're going to use the impact approach to support that classroom.
And they're going to get all of these supports?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then, next steps, on the June presentation with principals, can we attend that?
That will be a Ms. Byrd question.
Okay. I'm just curious.
I will refer to the superintendent's.
Yeah, yeah, and the plan for the bullying, strengthening bullying, didn't that come down from state statute? The bullying prevention plan and stuff?
Yes, we, what we found is, you know, you can know the processes and the pieces, and we have, we have done a significant amount of work in that area, but we can always improve the practice of it and how, the things that we've learned from it.
All right. Ms. Fortney, one of the things we're going to do, we looked at not only just to help with the bullying, helping staff and parents to recognize when it is bullying, when it's reported, if it's not reported, we report, and then actually having them to have some place on our website, we're developing flyers and all of that, what bullying is, what is it, have you asked these questions lately? So, more education, not only just for school staff, but with the community as well, and making sure, making it available on our website.
I know, as a teacher, we did our bully lessons, and, you know, you can sit around and kids will tell you, I mean, they'll tell you in a heartbeat what it is, you know.
So, and we'll be doing it more frequently throughout the year, this upcoming year, than just that one.
So, that ongoing behavior professional development for the summer academy, that's where the staff, I'm on next steps, July?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that you all alluded to a little bit was being able to front-line this discussion with some of our most critical schools. So, we would talk to principals and assistant principals in June, but actually offered this to a pretty good-sized group, 300 opportunities, you know, within that time period or that number of seats, for inviting those critical situations, you know, where we know that we've been struggling, and actually lay the groundwork on what is it, what do we do for the environment, how do we respond to the student, making sure we're calibrated on those pieces. So, that's the intent of that July session.
Okay, because that, I'm trying to figure out, is that like the first day of school kind of thing?
No, ma'am, just before the, great question, but we know that once we get that first day when we have teachers come back, they're trying to set up their classrooms.
Because I know sometimes they are able to actually pay the teachers to come in early for these treatments.
And we would be doing that, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Talbot, last seat here.
Ms. Fields.
Ms. Fields.
I have a couple of questions. On the observable trends, I think it would have been nice if we could have seen the trend as it relates to decreasing student discipline behaviors and then the increase in the highly disruptive and intense student behavior. I'd like to know if we can at least have the number of the increases in the highly disruptive by gender and ethnicity. I would imagine you all can get that.
Got the overall discipline trends, Ms. Fields, the problem has been with tracking these critical incidences, and because we'll have one place of entry into this process, in other words, it'll actually answer the question, Ms. Miller, is where do I access it? You access it at one phone number, everybody would access it there, but because there's not been one point of entry, it's hard to actually capture that data piece at this time. Different people have different ways that they've been looking at it and tracking it, but the system has not been put into place where we can track it across the district. That is one of the problems that we realized real quick. So, what I'm determining is a critical incident, and then what Dr. Sankey categorizing as a critical disturbance may be two different things. Are we talking about ESC, non-ESC? It really doesn't matter when it's a meltdown in the office, you know, we got to make sure that we're able to capture those data pieces as they're coming in, but we do have the overall school discipline piece, because we're aggregated each year.
And that would help, because what I hear often is that we say that discipline is decreasing, but the public sometimes don't believe that, for whatever the reasons may be. I have no idea why they don't believe it, but some don't, especially when it comes to ethnicity.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I just think they would be very valuable.
Yes, ma'am, being able to disaggregate that data will be a key piece, and I think when you go back and you look at the PBIS framework and where we're looking with, looking and working with schools, I would look at two or three key pieces of data while I'm looking at this. I look at the overall discipline referrals, and to me, I don't get alarmed, and it depends on the grade grouping, but we have some metrics by which I will say, okay, I think that looks like it's going pretty good. In other words, at the secondary level, about 1.5 to two referrals per student, because I can tell you, Michael Aix was good for two referrals every year, okay? I was going to get me a couple somewhere. And you got to realize that with secondary students, they're going to be teenagers, but the question is, there's other data pieces we look at. For instance, do we have teacher turnover? How is our teacher retention? How's our teacher attendance? How's our student attendance? And then they also have metrics by which they walk around and actually look and talk to different staff members and students. So, there are different metrics that we look at, not just the referrals, and I, we hear you loud and clear about, are we sure we're capturing all the referrals or all the incidences? capturing all the referrals or all the incidences? And I think that's an area, as Mr. Fields said, we could, we could actually address and increase. So there are other areas we need to look at and make sure. Because I do, we make sure we look at the discipline, the attendance, and that teacher retention because teachers will stay where they're supported and they feel like the good things are going on.
Amen.
And I think the key was exactly that. We wanted to make sure the data that we do eventually get to is reliable and, you know, that we can actually utilize it to gauge what's.
I understand that, but to me, and I'm not going to be negative about it, but I think if we're saying that we see we're seeing a decrease in the student discipline behaviors and an increase, we have to be able to show that in some form or fashion. And maybe you all can. I'm just saying. Because it's nice to say that, but we need something tangible to show that.
Yes, ma'am.
And if that's occurring, we need to be standing more so that people will understand that we are seeing a decrease in general behavior and we are, this plan will hopefully help to offset some of the highly disruptive behaviors that we're having.
Well, this, this plan will address those. Ms. Fortney, do you want to dig into the data piece? You don't know what to learn?
No, that's fine. We've been here for a minute, so I have a couple more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you give me the percentage of of your tiers one, you had 81%?
Yes, ma'am. When your core discipline, attendance or academic, when core's being successful, 80% of your students will be successful with that. So you're saying that like core should reach, a core plan should reach 80% of your students. And then for the 20%, that's not being successful in core, really your tier two intervention should be successful with that. So 80% at core, 15% at tier two. And then that really leaves you with about 5% of your population that would need a more intense tier three type intervention. And really, in terms of what we're talking about here is making sure that the right intervention is in place and the frequency of the intervention is in place. And then you've also got to have the full continuum of placements, which is some of what we've been talking about. Are we talking about a gen ed setting all the way to that full continuum of making sure we have the opportunity for residential placement if needed?
Okay, then my last question. Thank you, Dr. Bird. My last question is, okay, so this is an amazing plan and thanks to everyone who put this plan together. Who's going to make sure that this plan is is successful? Who's going to do the evaluation? I would imagine he's going to stop with you, Mr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am. Ultimately, I will be responsible for it. I'm confident when I say that because I've got a great team that will be working with me. This is your level team, move on. Yes.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend, then.
Yeah, I just first want to compliment you guys. I mean, this, to me, shows both organizational thought and listening. I appreciate it. Couple of, just a few thoughts and questions about it, things to think about. First, I welcome the fact that you say that it's fluid. You know, these are human dynamic situations. We need to be able to adjust to them fluidly and dynamically. So not having a static structure or, you know, one that's easily flexed is something I'm certainly supportive of. And I'm supportive of trial and error. I mean, if you see something doesn't work out the way you think it does, just communicate that. I mean, from my point of view. Secondly, so how many of these regional response teams are we talking about? Was that one per region?
Yes, sir.
And how many regions are we including the turnaround? So are there five?
Five.
Five, okay. And one of the things I hear, a distinction quite a bit is, and this may bleed over to the specifically ESC part of it as well, is supports that are direct to student versus supports that are sort of show up and consult with teacher. And I would, I would, I hope that at least the response teams and really all of it are more force multipliers, not consultants.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Townsend, let me allude to, the point you alluded to is very well made. And this was what we learned real quick. It's not going to the school and tell them they've got a problem. It's going to the school to help them solve the problem. And we don't leave that school until the problem's solved. And see, that's really a mind shift and that's one of the regional teams and the number is so critical. That's what we found was occurring. Well, we create this plan and then, well, who's supposed to implement it? Well, the district staff is gone. No, you stay till it's done, one way or the other. You stay till the plan's in place and we're being successful, both with student and environment. Or if it's not being successful, problem solving and trying to ask yourself, is this the right setting? Because a lot of times, you know, what we found was exactly what you're describing. Maybe we were there with well intentions, but how we were trying to put it in place was not working. So we, your points were my.
Okay, good, good. Concerning the bully stuff, I mean, I would say on this, again, this diagram to me looks, you know, everything's going to be in implementation and how it works, but this looks organizationally smart. I know, I like the distinction between environment and individual student. I think that's really well conceived. I, one, I'm glad, glad, glad to see bully stuff worked in into it. Bully is too reductive a word. I mean, it's childhood cruel, cruel, cruelty, you know, fights, violence, that kind of thing. But, you know, I, I'm pleased to see that built into it. I do, when we talk, and I think you touched on this a bit, what a problem behavior is going to be. And this gets back to the tracking question. And I don't want to beat the referral thing to death, but I hear the same thing as well. You know, like the easiest way to make your referrals go down is stop writing them. And, you know, I, are, is the referral kind of our chief unit of discipline? I mean, other than the things you've said, the retention models?
It has been over the years.
I mean, I would encourage us, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
No, it typically has been the chief mechanism by which we did school discipline. And it's something that, you know, from being a dean all the way through the system, we always were working on trying to make sure that we were able to, you know, when you need to write a referral, you write a referral. Sometimes if you have a teacher that's struggling with classroom behavior, you work with that teacher to identify what constitutes classroom management, what constitutes referral. We go through those processes. But at the end of the day, if teachers need support, we need to make sure they get the support they need.
Well, yeah, I wonder if we just ought to think a little bit about our relationship to the referral as a unit, what it means, what the consequences that come with it, like, what, you know, one of the things that I think all the studies I've read or seen is that typically a few of your teachers write most of the referrals. And if all else being the same, you tend to have poisonous dynamics in a couple of places. And I think if, if we're putting pressure on people not to write referrals across the board, we may be missing where somebody really needs help. And so whether we keep, you know, I wonder if there's something short of referral, like, because, because clearly every time there's a referral level behavior, that's not going to come through the system, I would guess. So, so it's kind of a two-tier tracking that we're doing. We're going to have ongoing disciplinary tracking, but we're also going to have severe behavior tracking. So, you know, to make sure we get accurate stuff on the referrals, I would just encourage you to think about our relationship with what the referral is and what it's about.
When I'm looking at the data pieces, I don't look at the referral itself is not the problem. The referral itself is a symptom of the situation, just like a call to end to this particular team is not the problem. It's a symptom of the situation that we got to go make sure that we dig down into. And so I've always been of the mindset and continue to be that if you got something that goes on in the classroom that you think warrants a referral, that the student needs to go to the office, then by all means do that. Now, we may come back after 10 of those particular referrals and have a discussion about, let's talk about it as an environment.
Right.
I know the, one of the first years I taught, I kept having classroom management issues within two classes back to back. But what I realized is I had two lunch periods back to back that I was getting kids from and they just were kind of excited when they were coming in. So I kind of had to make sure that I strengthened how the kids entered into the classroom. But I don't look at the referral as the problem. I literally look at that referral as a symptom of the situation. And I also, I'm totally of the mindset that teenagers are going to be teenagers. And a lot of times, we got to make sure that we separate teenage behavior from something that is egregious.
And one of the things I mentioned a couple of meetings, meetings ago, I think, if you add together our psychologists and our, our existing social workers and our existing guidance counselors or counselors and like our existing force of sort of mental health adjacent people, it's my understanding we have about 230, something around there. And, but, and, you know, I, a lot of, I hear particularly from counselors who are doing guidance counselor type stuff, but they're, they're also trained fairly extensively through their degrees to do mental health counseling and that kind of thing, and behavioral counseling. Are we doing anything? Are we thinking about how to offload some of their responsibilities that might be more bureaucratic or more school management based so that they could focus more directly on behaviors? And is that something that we're thinking about here?
Yes, sir. I know that Ms. Fortney is a strong advocate for that. I think that as we continue, especially at the elementary level, to try to work toward financially when we can, having each elementary school having an LEA. But that's a financial lift. But we've been doing that each year. We've been taking a good bite out of it. But making sure that the school-based team, and it goes back to when you're thinking about those tiers of support, how do we engage the school-based team, which the school counselor would be on with the district team, and making sure that we can actually provide those supports either at the district level or at the school level. And absolutely, the school counselor plays a vital role in some of the social and emotional pieces that go along with that. So, yes.
And one, I guess one sort of last thing related to authority and how this role rolls up. The way I've come to understand our model at the district level, particularly related to ESC, is that the ESC department, the apparatus, whatever you want to call us, you know, whatever, all of that support is a kind of, again, it's consultive, it's supplemental to where the lines of authority lie, which are primarily with the regionals. And like the decisions are being made by the regionals and the principals. And I, there are times when what ESC does is a suggestion or a, or a, or this is what the law says. Or, and are we calibrating the authority there at all? Is there going to be more of a, for lack of a better word, ESC doesn't seem like a co-equal branch of government in the organization when it comes to power. And so I'm just curious if we're recalibrating that at all or what's your thinking?
Yeah, we definitely, that piece when we talked about recalibrating or calibrating with our regionals, that's part of it, making sure that we are, that we are calibrated, that we're connected and that we're talking through some of those dynamics and nuances so that we have a very clear understanding of how we, how we work together. So even though, for example, when Dr. Snack would come to Arvindale High School, even though she didn't necessarily make the final decision at Arvindale High School regarding the situation, her expertise itself, you know, encourages, hey, we need to get this squared away. We need to follow some of the recommendations and guidelines and or if it's dealing with the law or support, so we need to do that. So we've got to build that connection tighter. We got to calibrate that. And that is part of, part of where we want to go.
And Mr. Townsend, I think one thing that from the ESC perspective of what we try and kind of preach or say a lot of times is our students with disabilities are students first. They're, they're gen ed students first that, you know, they, so they receive every right and have every, everybody has every responsibility to them first as a student individually, then even before you consider that they have a disability. So we try, and like you just said, try and provide more, it does kind of come across as a consultative kind of a service as far as our coordination and our work. But we also know that there's a level of responsibility that we have as an ESC team for the services and supports that our students with disabilities receive. And we are ideally the experts in those areas and people rely on us for that. So we want to provide that as well.
I mean, as a whole, I'm encouraged by this. I'm looking forward to see how it's, I mean, again, implementation is going to be everything and it's going to take a lot of human attention and hard, hard, hard work. But I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Back to Ms. Miller.
The two things, one, Mr. Townsend brought something up that, yes, as an advocate who sat on IEP meetings for 10 years, very, the ESC area manager can bring an idea and the principal would say, you have good leadership that obviously would have followed the law and what they were supposed to be doing. But there are a lot of principals who do not understand that dynamic and the fact that federal law does dictate what they're doing and would say, great suggestion, or thank you very much, and not implement anything. So I don't know that if we ever can make that part of their evaluation or how they're considered, but the regionals need to hold these principals accountable for these situations in their, in their schools where they are, we are spending a lot of money on ESC area managers, on staffing specialists that know the law. And when they're giving that advice or they're giving that information at an IEP meeting, it needs to be held as the law. And in my experience, oftentimes it was not. The other thing I wanted to mention is when we don't, when we have issues or, you know, people like to throw the word bullying around and we very quickly can go down the chart to describe the behavior and say it is or is not bullying. And from a parent's perspective or, you know, a teacher's perspective, when they, when they get the word back, oh, this wasn't bullying, we're sorry. You know, there's no follow-up. We need to address negative behavior, whether it's bullying or not. We can't let the word bullying lead our response to negative behavior.
So if I could just speak to that very quickly, whether it's substantiated or unsubstantiated. So, so to say definitively that we're not following up, I think we do quite a bit of following up. In other words, we are trained to make sure that we address the situation, regardless of whether it's substantiated or unsubstantiated. We want to make sure that we take care of the social, emotional needs of our kids. And so now, we may have instances of that where we have to do more or we may need to promote that at a wider and, you know, maybe do a better job promoting that and working with that mentality. But we certainly, you know, want to make sure that any situation where children are in a contentious situation or a situation that can be harmful to them mentally, emotionally or physically, we want to make sure we attended that. So we'll work, we'll work to that end.
Thank you. Thank you.
With very practical suggestion along those lines. I mean, I don't know how many formal bully complaints or cruelty complaints we get, but I would feed them right into this system. I mean, that way you're, you're, you're tracking them. Everybody's aware of them. Again, I think what we found in previous bully issues is if the first interaction with the parent doesn't happen fast and doesn't go well, things go downhill from there. And it's good to know that here because then you can get involved or you can get involved. And a lot, a lot of times you guys have the ability to head things off before they get to a point where, where, you know, we've gotten to before. I would feed them right in, right into this thing. So.
Ms. Fortney?
I just want to say something about the referrals and, you know, back in the day, in the 80s, I might have had one of these tier two kids all day long. Now I've got one in each row, every period, every day. And that is just magnified. And I just wanted to put that out for public record, actually, because sometimes the only way that classroom teacher knows how to get class moving forward is to get them removed via a referral.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you all. I know this was long, but this was, we need to make sure that we went through this, you know, so that you're aware of the direction that we're headed. And we'll keep you apprised of how it's going and bring you updates throughout the upcoming year. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, McKeel quickly. I don't think she's on there. We're going to go to a break.
Awesome.
Is Carolyn in here? There she is. Okay, Carolyn and Candy.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I know you're really disappointed that I do not have a multi-page.
We'll let you see it for next time.
So this is the item that deals with the McKeel Academy, a request to build a 12 classroom building on the McKeel Academy project. So we have a conversion charter school, McKeel Academy of Technology, separate from their two centers. two centers, the McKeel South and the McKeel Central. And I say that because I just want to specify, because there's different rules that govern conversion charters than there are startup charter. So it will be, so what they are requesting is the right to build the building on our property. It will be built to ASRAF standards. It would have no additional maintenance costs attached to it. In other words, this McKeel schools would take any maintenance requests or costs associated with it. If you recall, for our traditional conversion charters, we are required to provide that maintenance. So when we execute this in terms of a formal agreement, we would specify that piece. It would add an additional two hundred and seventy-five seats in that twelve classroom addition. A hundred and seventy-six of those seats would be filled with the students who are coming from McKeel South to fill those seats, because currently there's the seventh grade at McKeel South. And at this point in time, they would want to move those students, and this would allow them to access some high school coursework and things like that. The remaining ninety-nine seats from the two seventy-five after the one seventy-six, those would be the open seats that would be part of their terminal lottery system. So when I met with the superintendent to talk about this, she very wisely leveraged this opportunity to sort of create a win-win to increase the number of at-risk and low-income students that McKeel Academy of Technology, that seven through twelve center would serve. So I gave you a little handout, mine has written notes, but it has two maps on it. The first is Zone A, all the zones on the magnet school. So their current, so the McKeel Academy of Technology, current serves all of the students in Zone A, because at that point in time, when they converted to charter status, they were a choice school, so they fell under our regular magnet and choice requirements. So they currently transport students who wish to attend to anywhere from Zone A to the school. What we are saying is that continues, they will continue to commit to transport those students, but they will create a higher priority enrollment zone. And if you turn to the second page, the second map, you'll see that located right around the building itself, they have created a secondary enrollment priority area, and these students would receive a higher preference to attend. And the students around this area that live in it, there are a hundred and ninety-eight seventh through senior students that attend there now, they have a very high mobility rate in this particular area. So we took a snapshot in time just to take a look at what sort of students, how many we have, to make sure they could fill those seats. So those students, I know I worked on, I have a cat on humanity house in this area. I know we've got some low-income housing, lots of apartments. So there's, that is a different clientele perhaps than we always see at McKeel, and so this priority, I think, would really increase the diversity at the school site. So we would have the twelve classroom building, it would revert back to us, just like any other conversion charter school would revert back to us in case that there would, the schools would close. In the meantime, we have the twelve classrooms. It would be built to ASRAF, which helps us, because this is a hurricane site as well, so if we need to shelter, it increases the space there, and it would allow them to build that classroom length. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I also want to point out that Alan Black and his board chair are here, just in case you have questions that I can't answer.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so, so I understand, of the two hundred and seventy-five, we said the one hundred and seventy-six is going to automatically move to there. Then with the ninety-nine seats, which are the open lottery, it's going to be a combination of two, if I'm correct, obviously any employee, student, siblings, that will be taken, so maybe that's, I don't know, I'm going to make up a number, twenty, ten, fifteen, I don't know. Okay, and so the remaining of ninety-nine minus ten, which would be eighty-nine, let's say, would then pull from the area in the red zone that you have outlined on the second map. Am I on the right page?
You got it exactly right.
Okay. And you said, hang on, and you said, so out of, so let's say that eighty-nine would move, the one hundred and ninety-eight are in that area, because quite frankly, not everybody may choose to go there. They may be happy where they're currently at, they might be a rising senior, whatever. So potentially, half of the children in that red-zoned area could attend if they applied and were accepted. Is that correct? Now, do they still apply, or are they autom, help me?
They still apply.
They still apply?
Because we don't want to presume that a zone student who, like you said, was really happy at their own school that we're just going to pull them out.
Okay. So how are we going to get the word out to that community in the red zone? I'm calling it the red zone because I don't know how, that area that's been outlined.
Well, I spoke with Alan Black briefly about that, and we talked about the fact that there'd have to be some intensive marketing.
Okay, some way to let the community know.
So they really should do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Miller, then, Ms. Miller.
I just want to clarify that those ninety-nine seats would be for seventh grade, starting, I think it was 2020 is when they're hoping to have it open. So it wouldn't be an eleventh grader, that would be specifically for those students, or would it be any grade level?
Well, the enrollment preference would be for all of the, all of the students.
For the whole school.
But I want to be very careful that because we're talking conversion charter, like we're talking about school-wide, at McKeel Academy of Technology, the high school.
Correct. I just meant for, starting with the additional seats, that would be for 2020 is when they'll have those additional seats.
Correct.
That the students able to apply and enroll that year would be starting in seventh grade, or could you, as a senior, be applying that year?
You could, there's always, just like at all of our schools, there are always seats that are open.
I just want to commend McKeel Academy of Technology for agreeing to this. This is something that certainly, you know, it's more challenging to educate kids that don't, you know, in this demographic, that that's something that we know from, there's data that shows us that. So I just commend you for taking that leap and agreeing to doing this. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Miller and Mr. Townsend?
I too. We've talked about diversity at our charters for a long time, and I think that McKeel should be recognized for this. Admitting students and keeping them because their level of support is different is two different things. So I would be cautious of the level of support that's required for these kids to be successful in that setting, and that that's something they're prepared for. And not all kids, some of them, you know, would need minimal supports, but as a person who works in support services, I would think they would need probably more than they currently are providing at this time, and I'd like to see the kids who do enroll able to maintain.
Okay. Mr. Townsend, then Ms. Fields.
Tell me, Alan, that we're not funding, are we funding the construction of the little town?
No, they're paying for all of it.
Where is the expansion? Is it right there on their campus?
Yes, so when, if you're facing, if you're on, like, on Parker Avenue, right in front of the school, and you look to your left of the building, there's currently, there's some shrubbery, some bushes, and, yeah.
Okay, it's essentially part of the main.
Correct.
So, so here's my thought. This is a small enough district, why wouldn't, you know, I, this is the same thing I said about Lake Wells, why wouldn't we consider making this little district the School of Last Resort status for McKeel, and having them be, instead of an opt-in school, be an opt-out school? Again, I know I was changing the deal, but just a thing to think about. I mean, why, how many kids do we project will go? Do we, do you have any idea, Alan? I mean, why wouldn't we consider, because I think DOE says you can do it. You know, I, thoughts? I'm interested in that.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I have some thoughts about it. I think it's a great idea. I'm not crazy about the word School of Last Resort.
You know what I mean? It's, you know, it's the...
A district, maybe a charter, zone school, right?
The default school, whatever, yeah.
But, and I, but I think it's part of a bigger discussion. I think it's something we ought to talk about as a school, as a district, and maybe in the future, work towards that, because if the DOE is willing to accept that as a possibility, I think it's a valid concern and a valid way of moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to hold this off because of that, but I would seriously like us to start, anytime we're doing a deal like this from now on with anybody, ask them if they're willing to be zoned, like, to be the opt-out school as opposed to the opt-in school. I mean, I've talked to Alan, I know what their commitment, what they want to do. You know, we'll see if this ends up playing out that way. I hope that it does, but this would be a chance to guarantee some number of kids the ability to walk to school, which we struggle to do right now, and to know that they're going to be there. And it would be an interesting experiment, quite honestly. I'd be very interested to see how they would do in that environment. So, I mean, anyway, just a thing to think about.
I'll see Ms. Fields.
I think it's amazing how we have one item on the table, and then another item comes into play. And before we even have that kind of conversation, I think we need to have it as a general body, in my opinion. The opt-out thing, just throwing it out there like that, I think we need to have discussions and make sure that we're all on the same page. I don't know how the other board members go about it. I have my own opinion on the matter, but I'm not going to discuss it today, because to me, this is not the time to discuss it. I want to commend McKeel Academy. This is not anything new. They've been working on this for a while. They've been wanting to go into the northwest area and to serve more kids that are considered to be disadvantaged. I don't know that I would use that word, kids that would like to have the same opportunities as others to learn and to have the same opportunity. And so I think that it's great that they're going to do this, that they're going to invest the dollars, and that they are going to make sure that the building is in compliance. They don't have to do that, if my memory is correct, with charter schools. And so to me, that in itself is saying that they really want to do what is right. And so I am very much in support of this, and I'm very pleased that this will allow more kids that are on the north end of town to have an opportunity with their parents to decide whether or not they want to actually apply and be a part of McKeel. So I would say, Mrs. Goy.
Mr. Wilson?
I agree, I agree with Ms. Fields. I think this is a great opportunity for us, and I'm very supportive of it. I also spoke to Mr. Black in the past, not as relates to this particular issue, but in the past, and I know where his heart is, and I know he intends to fulfill his requirements to the district. But I have to go back to what Ms. Miller said, because I think that is the core issue in our state today. It's not that charter schools don't have to accept ESC students and at-risk students, it's that they often don't provide the services they need, and then those students either opt out or they're forced out in many cases. And I think that's the big challenge we have in our state today as it relates to public education. So I think it's a valid point, but I know what they have, what they're trying to accomplish, and I'm confident that that's not going to be an issue here.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank Superintendent Berg for brokering that and for, obviously, Mr. Black, because it would be nice if everybody could do that kind of thing, what's best for kids, all the time.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Just one note in response to Ms. Fields, you know, this is the first time this has been on the agenda, and so it was the first time anybody's had a chance to say anything about it. If somebody, you know, if we had said, hey, we're negotiating this deal, then I would have certainly given that input during the beginning of it. You know, I also think the concept of a zoned McKeel, at least an element of it, is not something that McKeel itself is particularly afraid of. We, I think they talked to a number of us, I know they talked to me, individually a year or two ago, and, you know, I, it'll be really interesting to see how many kids go and stay. What I see here, though, is a chance in the future to let a lot of kids who could walk to school and benefit from walking to school, walk to school and not have to be bused however far away we're busing them. And I would love to further the discussion, McKeel, about this and talk further about it. And I'm, you know, like I said, I'm not going to stand in the way of it tonight, it's just a, we need to start thinking differently about some of these things. Thanks.
Ms. Miller?
Are we going to be able to track these students from the zone that go to that school, and if they're there for a period of time and exit?
Certainly.
And then I, I think this is definitely outstanding thing that we're doing here, and I'd like to promote Berkeley to do the same, and so, and keep having this conversation with other charters.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're officially on a break.
Yay.
Like ten minutes or fifteen?
I think we're going to have to leave it at a ten minutes.
Ten minutes, ten minutes.
We have a quorum, so we're ready to get started.
We're ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Berg. Over the past several years, we've been looking for opportunities to strengthen and expand our professional development for leadership throughout our entire school system. We have partnered with Emily Rogers, who is an expert in leadership consulting and coaching, to work alongside us in this endeavor. She's helped us develop an approach that will deliver actionable steps and measurable results that will elevate our capacity to lead with excellence. This will result in cultivating a culture that will support our ability to achieve greater success as leaders and as a cohesive leadership team, which will ultimately enable us to improve the culture and climate of Polk County schools. Today, Emily is with us to share her thoughts on our leadership project. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Good to be here, everybody. It gives me home. I say home because I grew up here in Bartow. I'm a product of the Polk County Public School System, and I started my career as an elementary school teacher at Scott Lake Elementary in 1991, with a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in reading and language arts. And while I was teaching for four years at Scott Lake, I earned a second master's in educational leadership at the University of South Florida. And while I am presently no longer, vocationally speaking, a teacher, I continue to stay passionately engaged in the mission of education through my role as a volunteer leader on the Polk Education Foundation, the State Education Foundation, and our local United Way of Central Florida Board of Directors, supporting education initiatives in our community. I am joined by my colleague, Dr. Allison Madaway Smith. Allison is from Hillsborough County, just our neighboring county. Her mom is a retired principal, and Allison spent the majority of her career in a human resource role at public supermarkets, and he was the senior vice president of HR for Publix before joining the organization. I'm here to talk with you about the program that John and I have been envisioning for the last few months, to provide some context for that program, expected outcomes, and to answer any questions that you may have. It's my understanding that you received a one-page summary of the program, page one and page two, and you received my bio and Allison's bio. My business exists to help individuals and organizations become better leaders, to grow and to realize their full potential in purposeful, balanced ways. So that's what this program is about. We anticipate an August start, and phase one of the two-phase program that we have outlined at this point will be focused on the cabinet, your most senior leaders within the organization. And that's because I believe that the most senior leaders in the organization are the ones that create the cultural weather patterns, if you will, within an organizational culture. So we'll be starting phase one with the cabinet. I'll be working with them October through March. And then in phase two, I'll be working with your next level of leadership down, approximately forty executive-level members within the district, and that work will start in January and run through June. So we'll have several months of overlap there, where I will be working with the cabinet at the same time I'm working with the... at the same time I'm working with executives. But what's important is I'm starting this work with the cabinet, because we want the cabinet to share a common language for what it means to lead with excellence and to have a healthy organizational culture. And we want them to be walking the talk first and foremost before we cast pages down to the next little level of leadership within the organization. So within phase one, we're going to do three assessments to gauge the health of your organizational culture and the effectiveness of your leadership team. It will start with an organizational culture survey. It will help us understand how the- how the district team views the organizational culture today and what they would like to see more of or less of in the future. And that will direct us to most important conversations that need to take place with the leadership team as it relates to organizational culture. So that's the first assessment tool. That will benchmark the health of your organizational culture. An option at some point down the road, which many of my clients ultimately do, is they retake that culture survey twelve to eighteen months down the road to see what movement has occurred. We haven't planned that far out yet, but that is a possibility in a phase three, for example. The second assessment that we will be doing as part of phase one is we will be conducting three-sixty leadership assessments on the ten cabinet members. So they will understand both individually and collectively as a team, their leadership strengths and opportunities, and have conversations about that. And finally, we'll do a team assessment to engage the cohesiveness of your ten-member cabinet team. Those assessments and the information derived from those assessments will inform our conversations in a five-part workshop series that I will facilitate with your cabinet in the fall and going into the spring of next year. So that's phase one. If you'd like, I'll pause for questions about phase one before I move to phase two, if you would like for me to do that, or I can just move straight on.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
So do you come to this with your own perceptions about what makes a strong leadership culture? Or are you a blank slate who's addressing what our people say and then what the leadership says? What's your point of view on that?
An interesting question. I would reply to that by saying a combination of the two. I've held a number of leadership roles in my twenty-five-year career. So I've got a lot of real-world experience to understand what works well and what doesn't from a leadership perspective. And then I have, you know, the training and the data that will come from the assessments that we administer that gauge the health of the organizational culture and the effectiveness of leadership. Did that answer your question?
Uh-huh.
I would say it's a combination of the two.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm- what I think is important about this is the first bullet. It kind of, how- and so how- how public is that report gonna be? How- how, you know, when you compare what the people say versus what- what our people say versus what our- our leadership says, and there's variances in it, how do you adjudicate that, I guess? And- and how public is that gonna be? How- like, it seems to me that that will be very important baseline. So what's your thinking on- on that?
So we have not had a conversation at all about the public nature of this information. John, do you wanna address that?
So- so from a professional development perspective and a growth mindset perspective, most of the time when you're utilizing these type of surveys, you're doing it to build and grow your leadership. I really haven't, and- and you've been- you're typically transparent with those you lead and with those that you follow. In regards to utilizing that instrument for consumption for the public or-
That's- that's- I'm sorry, that- let me- public's probably the wrong- the wrong- the wrong- the wrong word. I mean, I think I suspect it will be public record, but the, like, how- is the board going to know the outcome of this? Or is- who's gonna know the outcome of this outside of- outside of just the cabinet? I guess is probably a better question.
So at this point, the plan is to brief the initial results with Superintendent Bird and Mr. Hill, and then brief the results with the cabinet, so that they understand the strengths and opportunities that exist from a cultural and a leadership perspective. That, to Mr. Hill's point, becomes a development tool. That's the purpose of these assessments. Within the culture survey, there are thirty-one cultural dimensions that are evaluated. Within the leadership assessment, there are twenty-nine different leadership dimensions that are assessed. And those two assessments are built off of the same platform. So there's a lot of interesting comparison points between the culture survey and the leadership assessment.
So I think, if I understand your question correctly, eventually, if you look at it from the system when you build out over time, there are, for example, if you tie it to the strategic plan, in which there was a lot of discussion about focusing on climate, culture, and morale, eventually, you'll be able to utilize those metric- metrics as a whole against the health of your organization. But typically, from a growth perspective, if you would not necessarily set an individual out there, that would be an internal discussion and growth piece. At least as I understand it, now certainly, we're open to discussing that with Ms. Bird in however she deems necessary for those type of situations.
Totally. And I've- I've actually completed a three-sixty before, and we've done it on several of our current staff members. And it is a professional development tool and growth tool. When you start having them to administer these evaluations and then you make it public, I think you beca- the process becomes stagnant then. The goal is to have that person look at the results and then to set up a plan that- how you make that have growth within the organization. That was our overall two here. So is it public? I- I would say, and this is me, I would say I would not have it public, because our goal is to grow the individual and so that we grow the organization. And not to have it to where you share those results and then it becomes stagnant. And the first, the growth is not there, because it's always look at how I responded or what they think of me versus look at how I can take this information and become a better leader.
Again, let me just say, public was probably not- not what I'm- what I'm looking for is, again, we haven't quite- we didn't quite align on what that strategic plan wanted to look like on cul- culture. You know, the board has its- has some perceptions. I have my own perceptions. There are, I'll be very frank, there are things I would like to see changed in- in- in how the culture works. What I'm trying to avoid is this comes in and says, "Everything's fine. Hey, we got a vote of confidence. Hey, we do some- some- some development, and we- and we move, move on." And then- and then- and then there's like bad, not bad bullet, but there's- so I- I want us to be aligned on it. So that's what I'm trying to get to.
So I understand now. I- I understand. So, you know, when we work with Emily, we did not do this, obviously. We tried to do things systemically. So I've had conversations with Dr. Fredho about the- the- how the leadership plan that we are interested in growing now will connect very beautifully to the strategic plan and some of the concerns the board has and some of the areas that you want to attend to. So this whole process, when you begin to utilize this type of process, does not even lend- it does not lend itself to somebody just slanting it toward an instant stamp of approval, not needing growth or development. In other words, we're gonna find some areas that you're gonna get affirm- typically, a leader will have some areas of affirmation, and typically, a leader will have some areas of growth and improvement. And- and I think in the end, you're gonna be very pleased with the overall outcome of the process.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think as I was scrolling, I may have found the answer to my question. But for the three-sixty survey, it says you're- it'll go to six hundred and fifty employees. So I'm assuming it's not just the direct reports of these individuals, it's also the people that report-
So we're talking about two-
To their direct reports, okay.
We're talking about two different things. The cultural survey will go to a much broader audience, because it's gonna gauge the organizational cultural health. So we wanna do a broad audience. And the three-sixty assessment of an individual leader typically goes to about twelve to fifteen evaluators. And so that would be the person's boss, their direct reports, their peers that they collaborate with most often. So it's- those are the typical categories that we use in terms of evaluators for a three-sixty assessment. And the individual also does a self-assessment, so we can see how the individual views himself or herself as a leader and any gaps that might exist in that perception, which is important, because that indicates that a leader perhaps has a blind spot to work on.
Okay.
Other questions about phase one? We're gonna move on to phase two in a second. Our fifteen-minute time, right?
One more. Sorry. The leadership culture survey, those six hundred and fifty that that will go to, is that leadership of the district? Teachers, principals?
I'll explain that. So we start at the top of the org chart. So Ms. Bird, the cabinet, the school board, if they would like to participate in that. We've got a placeholder there. The executive leadership team, the direct reports of all of the executive leadership team, as well as all of the principals in the district. And I think that's the last run we went to.
Yeah. And then we have a plan to kind of connect it on down to the school level, because we're already doing some things school-based. So in order to build coherence, we're- we've got a far-reaching plan that we'll be moving through in phase.
Just wanna say thank you.
Kind of aligning and coordinating.
We know. We've talked quite a bit about this the past two strategic planning sessions, about three-sixty evaluations and getting the feedback, not just from the people you report to, but the people underneath you and the people you work with. So, thank you for looking at this.
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yeah, well, going back to my first strategic planning retreat session, I used one of your quotes from the newspaper, actually. And Superintendent Bird and I have communicated about it numerous times. And when she sent me a message that we were going to employ you, I was thrilled. So this has just been a great work session so far. I'm hoping it continues. We're zero fourteen.
You must be referring to the column that I write for the Ledger on a monthly basis about leadership. Thank you. It's nice to know somebody's reading it.
I- I'm front to back on that thing every morning like clockwork.
Wonderful. So if there aren't any other questions about phase one, I'll quickly move to phase two, this will go quicker. Phase two is going to engage about forty executive-level leaders within the organization. They will also be briefed at a high level on the results from the organizational culture survey, so they understand what's going on and the role that they can play in improving the organizational culture through their leadership effectiveness, both individually and collectively as a cohesive leadership team. So they will engage in a six-part leadership development training series that will be facilitated by both Allison and I. And they'll- they'll receive educational materials. It'll be a very highly engaging workshop. And we'll survey them in to understand the value that they received and their primary takeaways and how they're utilizing this information going forward. So that's phase two. And then phase three, which really hasn't been defined at this point, could potentially be additional engagement with the cabinet to maintain progress that we've made and to perhaps reassess the health of the culture and the leaders at some point down the road in phase three. So other questions?
Ms. Cunningham, go back to Ms. Miller.
Okay, I think it's wonderful. Been through a lot of executive training myself through the years. But my question is, it was odd to see it rolled out in sixteen months. Why will it take that long? I've never been involved in something quite so long. I feel like a lot of what's been outlined, but again, I'm only going by what you've outlined, should be able to be accomplished within a good twelve-month period. So tell me- tell me why it's so long. I don't understand that.
Well, we are starting with the cabinet, and I'll have four or five months dedicated to just the cabinet. And that does involve the administration of the surveys, the debriefs of the survey results, the discussion around the surveys, and then the workshops. So there's a couple months of lead-up before we actually get into the workshop work, because we need to conduct the surveys and get the baseline kind of information, because that will form our conversations in the cabinet workshops. So that will be going on, and then about four or five months into that, then I'll start engaging the executive-level team. And that program, we will meet with them every three to four weeks for about two hours. And so each workshop will last about two hours. And I have found that organizations get more systemic change when there's a two-to-three week gap between trainings, and here's why. Because that gap between trainings allows those leaders the opportunity to practice real-world what they've learned in a previous workshop and to apply those learnings real-world. Then we come back and we debrief, "How did it go?" You were working on creating a higher- more highly- more highly functioning team. I gave you some tools and resources to try. How did it go? We debrief that, and then we introduce a new concept and teach a new concept. And then we give them another two or three weeks to apply that. And in my experience, you get- the change is more systemic and it sticks longer. So that's why it's a longer engagement. Most of my engagements within organizations when I'm working with multiple levels of leaders are twelve to eighteen months. That's very- a very common kind of program structure for the work that Allison and I do.
Next question. We're in a world of change, as we all know. And so my second question is, I would anticipate that not everybody that starts on the leadership team will be there, and that's why I'm kind of asking about the eighteen-month, sixteen-month question?
Yeah.
Because people are gonna change, just because that's inevitable in the world in which we live.
Yeah.
So my question is, have you built in something to bring a new person that may come in, you know, at the eight-month period and you've just completed the first one? Now how does that person be able to tie in and pick up? Is there something that you've built in? Because I'm sure you've seen this before.
Yeah, of course.
How do we handle that?
Of course. Yeah, we've built in, if we need to add an additional participant at some point down the road, add an additional assessment. So if for some reason there was a new cabinet member, we could get them plugged into the program, do the assessment, get them up to speed and get them engaged in the program. Likewise, with the executive level, if there's a new member of the team, we'll be doing DISC assessments at the executive level, so style assessments, so we can easily administer another assessment, easily get somebody else engaged in the program. And we factor that in.
You have? Okay, great.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Ms. Miller?
Being part of some of- something similar in the past, who is responsible for the implementation of what you suggest or what you- your findings? Is that a long-term implementation, John Hill? Is that a long-term-
I watch at the voice too much.
Is there a plan to follow up to make sure that what you're finding is being implemented or your suggestions are being implemented?
So John and I will have check-ins very regularly throughout this program, both phase one, phase two. The observations that he's seeing in real time will help inform us and will help us know when we need to perhaps adjust a little bit or cover a topic in more detail than perhaps another topic. And then John will be responsible for carrying the torch beyond phase two.
But your contract, I'm not assuming that you're gonna work beyond that contract to complete this. So your support would only last for a certain amount of time, and it would be on Mr. Hill to renew that or suggest to renew that contract for support?
Yes, that's right. Yep.
Correct.
Mr. Townsend?
On the- the outcomes, the shared understanding of leadership excellence through a common framework and language, is that a document? What- what- what form does that take?
Sure, that comes from the dimensions that are evaluated in the culture survey and the three-sixty assessment. So there are definitions that surround those cultural attributes and those leadership attributes. So that becomes the common framework and the shared language.
Can you give an example of how that would play out? Like what's- like what?
Sure, so some summary- summary examples of the dimensions, is that what you're asking for?
Well-
You're reporting common language?
Well, I'm trying to guess of how- how it would be used. Like, how's this framework used in a-
So in a workshop setting, we would have a lot of dialogue around when we're seeing those qualities exhibited and when we're not, and what we'd like to see more of or less of, and what individual leaders need to do to change to be more effective and how the team needs to work more effectively together to be more cohesive. So those conversations around that language that will be introduced is- So those conversations around that language that will be introduced as part of those surveys will be embedded into the workshops and the training.
And I guess that sort of plays into my original question and all this, which, which was, we're going to do, whether you have a point of view on this, like, like, we're going to have a perception service, survey of our, our people on the ground to some extent, and they were going to have a leadership perception survey. Where is the common framework coming from? And like, like if, if they disagree, how, how do we, how does that get aligned and become the common frame, framework?
Yeah, so those differences of perspectives are an important piece in the conversation because those will appear. In an organization this size, there's going to be different perspectives about what's going on from an organizational culture perspective and how an individual leader or team of leaders is viewed. And so understanding that those different perceptions exist and seeing them tangibly in the data is very important for leaders to understand because if there is a perception that needs to be overcome, then they know it and we can talk about ways to deal with that. So does that answer your question? I can go on.
More, more, more or less. I might fall off with you, but.
Okay, certainly, yes. And Mr. Hill has examples of these assessment tools and the definitions of all of these dimensions, so if at some point you'd like to see that, if that's available. Yes.
Okay. Two things. One is I totally believe in the confidentiality piece. If I'm personally going through professional development, I would expect that when my supervisor came to me and we sat down and we talked about maybe some areas that Lori needs to improve upon, that that certainly would be kept between me and my supervisor, manager, whoever. I think that's critical. Otherwise, you're not going to get my buy-in, quite frankly, on the front end, and I may not be as receptive if I feel like others are going to be privy to that. That's just kind of management rule one oh one for me.
Yes.
Having said that, the second part that I do want to say is you said you haven't even talked about the follow-up survey. And I think, you know, and I know you, we're not there yet and this is sixteen months out, but I really feel like y'all need to plan to do that. For this to be a true measure of the leadership and the, hopefully, the cultural change, which I think a lot of us have talked about here in this district, the trust issues and everything else going on, a key part of this is once we identify the areas that we need to improve upon.
Yes.
And you, and then you're going to work developmentally with individuals who are leading those teams. If I was one of those, I would want to know in eighteen months or two years, what do we look like and how far have we come? So I know you said if and when, I'm saying, not if, but when, because to me, it's closure. It closes the circle completely and it lets people know where we've come, so to speak. Or me, as, as an employee, how well am I doing? Have I made a change? Do my, the people that work with me feel that? Have I impacted positively? If not, maybe I'm in the wrong job. I'm just being, you know, that's how we were trained. Maybe I'm not in the right place and maybe you'll work with me and coach me, you know, that I need to be looking over here because my skill set is better suited here than where I'm currently sitting, but here's why. Because we've been through this, and I think that's critical. Because sometimes people don't understand just that, that you can be very, very valuable, but maybe in a different place. So I hope we have the follow-up surveys, I guess what I'm saying, because I think that will complete the circle for me.
We have some intentionality about that, so thank you. That, like, that is really important.
I do, too.
Being more transparent about that, that that is an expected part of the process.
Yes.
Also says, we're really serious about this.
Correct. And we care.
And we're all going to be accountable to this.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to measure our progress so we can coordinate that.
Ms. Wilson, back to Mr. Townsend.
I think Ms. Rogers just stumbled on my comments, making sure that we are accountable.
That's right.
And being able to show the fruits of the labor.
Yes.
And the impact that it's, it's going to make, not just now, but long-term. It's going to be very crucial.
Yes, ma'am. And for me, that, that is the difference to succeed, is making sure that there's a way to measure our growth and progress.
Mr. Townsend?
So, so just, what exactly is the board's role in this, from, from your point, point of view? Like, what have, what do you, what do you, what do you see our role as?
Great question. So if the board would like to participate in the culture survey, you can do that. We can look at that data completely separate from all the other data. We can segment that data and look at your perspective versus the cabinet's perspective versus the whole organization's perspective, for example. So if you want to participate in the culture survey, you can. And if you want to participate in three sixties for any of the cabinet leaders, that's appropriate. If you work closely with any of those leaders, that might make sense, you know?
No, I don't think so, no, ma'am. I wouldn't want to.
This may still be up for the staff.
That needs to be for the individual staff and the people that work.
It needs to be a tool for Jackie.
What'd you say?
It needs to be a tool for Jackie.
Right, right.
Well, just, so just one, one, to pick up on everybody's point, I mean, I think this needs to be a tool that leads to something that people can feel.
Absolutely.
Amen.
And, and let's, this is something of a risk for every one of us on the board to do, because A, I'm pretty sure this hasn't gone through an RFP, right?
Correct.
Which, 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 which to me is a little bit of a cultural thing to begin with. You know, I've mentioned this a lot.
I appreciate that.
So, but, but let me, let me just finish. You know, it's, it's, the public gets very cynical about these kinds, kinds of things, and for good reason. And all my, you know, questions that they are designed to avoid public cynicism. You know, we as the board have a unusual role. We represent the, the public and have leadership and a lot of, we're kind of different than everybody, than everybody else is. So I think it's good that we get segmented out. That, that, that'll, that'll, that'll be good. But, you know, we're, we're spending the public's money on something and, and the public needs to see a benefit from it and, and the people who work for us need to feel the benefit from it.
Absolutely.
And that's, you know, I do, I mean, we're, we're, we're putting ourselves at risk on that, and I want you guys to, to, to understand and, 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 and that.
Yeah, it's your responsibility.
And I would urge, urge you to build whatever you're doing into the next strategic plan.
Yes.
I mean, there, there was going to be, wait, wait, we're, we're going to come back with some, something, right? There was a, there was a.
Yeah, just recently met with Dr. Freo and shared with him the vision of this component as it related to the part of the goal that you wanted to lay in regards to the culture piece. And the way I envisioned this, and the way Ms. Byrd envisioned it, as we discussed it, is that this is part of a systematic process of aligning our leadership development pieces, making sure there's coherence, and then making sure there's common language is really important, but making sure that there's a way to, to take actionable steps and measurable steps so that we can make sure that obviously we get the bang for our buck, that we're actually producing transformational leaders in our system, which ultimately is going to have a positive impact on our, the culture and the climate of our district.
And I was going to say, Matt, I see evidence of, of, just today, some, some good, some good cultural changes. This, this will be an ongoing process, I, but it needs to be a real process.
Absolutely.
And if it's not, if it's something that's just go through the motions, then A, we're all at risk for it, B, everybody else is going to be at risk for it. And so let's, let's make it real.
Very great.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Next, we have, we have two, we have Wendy, she's here. Item seven and eight, she can go ahead and do both of those because they're, they're actually policies. One is the update to bring the HOPE Scholarship in line with statute. So Wendy will go ahead and cover seven and eight.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome home.
So there are two recommended updates on, on the policy update today. They are both considered from staff since they weren't new or recommendations. The first is to the HOPE Scholarship policy, to, as Mrs. Byrd said, align it with statute. And then the second one are, is regarding grant funds and that's so that we can maximize our ability to apply for and receive grant funds, both federally and from the state. So are there any questions?
Questions?
Just one quick comment.
Mr. Townsend?
And I think the, this illustrates kind of the point we were talking about briefly earlier on, on the HOPE scholarships. I mean, this is a compliance act, you know, you're, you're, like, this does very little to actually address a child's well-being, where they are. Like, like it's, it's very separate from what we're, what we're talk, talk, talking about today. And I don't, someone, somebody had said it's laid, laid out instead at, at you what you're supposed to do with, with bullying, and, and, and it is. But often I think those, those statutes are not particularly helpful in, in actually dealing with a child at, at the bottom-line level. And I, I, I just think this illustrates, I mean, I'm, I'm not against it or anything. I'm, I'm, I'm just making, making the point that this is impersonal and compliance.
Just checking the boxes.
Yeah, right, right.
Any other questions?
Do we have the third one related to volunteers?
Volunteers?
The volunteers actually was pulled.
Okay.
Because I would like to have Ms. Pleasant to come back, because there are some questions that you all asked previously that need to be answered before we put this back on. So she's going to bring that back. Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
How do you monitor?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
Wait, there was a, there was a question.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not related to that, but I just wanted to know, what is Ms. Wendy going to be able to come before us and give us a legislative update?
It will be, it will have to be June because she just got back, so it will have to be on the June meeting.
The next work session, June eighteenth work session.
I have, I have a question.
Ms. Miller?
Under the, the copy of grant funds. Sorry, I have shoulder pains. I sound like I'm taking seconds between my words because I really am.
That's okay.
Right. So the superintendent shall present the following proposals to the board for approval. And we're changing proposals with budgets exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand. You're striking the five thousand, is that what you're doing there?
Right. Because the superintendent has already upped two hundred and fifty thousand in all of our other policies, and so we're trying to align those.
Okay, that was my question.
Any other questions?
Please come to the board's.
Thank you, ma'am.
And now I would like to present Dr. Aces.
We're almost there. Dr. Aces, if I were, can you go ahead and cover SPP where you're there?
Yes, ma'am.
As well? That's that one. I'm sorry. He will cover since he's sitting, reading endorsement and the last discussion item.
So I'd ask Superintendent Byrd to have some time in a work session to be able to talk about the new reading endorsement statute that's getting ready to come into play as far as the actions that we need to take on it. I thought it was critical as a school board that you were aware of what was getting ready to occur. And we have the information firsthand, because I'm sure that teachers and different people in the community would ask you about it. So there's two pieces that, a statute that was signed into law over the twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen legislative session that are now coming into play. In the twenty seventeen legislative session, there actually was a bill signed into law that talks about if you're going to be providing instruction during summer school, that you need to make sure that you're highly qualified and that you have that reading endorsement. So that's one piece that was signed. And then in twenty eighteen, it also talked about if you provide reading endorsements, then you need to have the reading, if you provide reading instruction or reading intervention, then you need to have that reading endorsement. Again, that was signed, that was a year ago, twenty eighteen, but again, it's now coming into play. We're actually putting action and plans into place to address that. So what does that currently mean for our teaching staff? For the teaching staff that we have in play, Ms. Fortis and I have looked at both ourself, teaching and learning, and, and professional development. Basically, what it means is this. So any teacher kindergarten through fifth grade who teaches reading, which is all of our kindergarten through fifth grade classroom teachers, will need to have the reading endorsement. And you could actually accomplish this by a couple of ways. It depended on when you actually graduated from college, and we would look at that, and, and if you graduated from a college of education. But basically, we'd have to review all the teachers, and we've been in the process of doing that. The other group of teachers that it affects also is our teachers who teach intensive reading. Well, we've already been working with those teachers, but what, what we're saying is that for all kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers, the mass majority of them, we'd have to review and make sure that they have the reading endorsement, our teachers who provide that summer school instruction, and the teachers who do the intensive reading classes. So when we talk about the magnitude of this undertaking, it's about three thousand teachers that we have would need this reading endorsement that we'd have to review and make sure that they're good to go. So by the summer of twenty twenty, which is next year, we have to make sure that summer school piece is in place. And also by the start of the twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, we got to make sure the K-five and intensive reading piece is in place.
So you have a year.
Yes, ma'am. Excellent. And Ms. Cunningham, the main thing is that we've got that underway and that the teachers are pursuing that.
Yes.
We do have quite a few teachers that are in that K-five band that are good to go with that. But we want to make sure that, we, we've designed a plan that we can do this two or three different ways. So it's quite an undertaking, as you can imagine, trying to, and teacher, districts all across the state of Florida are working on this and have worked on it two or three different ways. So one of the ways we do it is providing direct, instruct, direct classes in the afternoons or weekends, like at Jim Miles, and a teacher could come in and, and actually work on those five competencies, the five classes. They could do it that way. They could do a hybrid, some of it online, some of it direct, face-to-face, or they could do it all online through various different ways. But the methodology that we kind of try to promote and work with schools on this, because there'll be a lot of schools that'll take this on as an initiative and will work to train, like their reading coach on their campus, to actually be able to deliver the, the competencies at their school. So the idea is that we could take the competency classes to the school and a teacher who's reading endorsed, they could re-deliver those. We'll be able to do it at each one of our campuses. Again, it's going to vary from campus to campus and depending on the needs at each campus, but that would be really a preferred methodology. That way, you're not worried about, you know, am I online with somebody at the district or, or do I got to go in to do a class? Or it's more of a school-wide initiative to take this on. And the other method you could do is, you know, some universities are actually providing these, and then some of our consortiums are, have provided these. But the ones that we're working on is at no cost to the teacher, and we got that put into place. Now, a lot of times, again, when we look at state statute, sometimes we look at trying to meet that statute as being a compliance. I really don't, I don't view this, this as a really a compliance item. I truly believe that to move this district, the long game to move this district, is to really strengthen reading throughout our district, and I truly believe that. I think that we need to really try and embrace it in that manner. We have set aside some funds for paying the coaches or to paying the staff member that would actually need to be facilitating these courses, the ones that would be going in and working with the teachers to work through these competencies. We've set aside some money to facilitate those courses. And so we, we've been able to budget that. Mr. Prong and I have looked at it with several different thoughts, and so we got that set aside. But I truly believe that while this is a compliance issue, we have waited for the state board to make some rule on it. They are not going to do that. We got to move on with it. We've had staff working on those course, those competencies. I really believe they're strengthened. But I truly believe that while we have to do this because it is a state statute, I do believe this is what's in the best interest of our students for the long game.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so I fully agree. I agree that it needs to be something that's done if we can do it with our own people, number one. Number two, it's great to have training at Jim Miles, except more than half of your teachers live on the other side of the county. So what I would simply ask, it's, it's difficult if you're a parent and you've got three kids and you're trying to get this endorsement and you're having to head to Lakeland, just being real, okay? So all I'm saying is if you're thinking about having them on one of our sites, you talked about in the individual schools. Obviously, that would be the preferred choice. Could all five of us or six of us, however many, could come, you know, all make one exact evening? Probably not because of schedules and kids and activities. So I don't know if that's preferred, but certainly that would be ideal to start there. But then if you're going to offer a centralized one, the only thing I'm going to ask you is to look at, you know, east and west or east central, to be fair to Winter Haven, you know what I'm saying? Something on the east side, something in the center, something on the west, rather than just focusing. If we're going to do it at a local site, it would only be or you simply mentioned Jim Miles. I'm saying explore the option of going to other places to make it a little bit easier for people to travel. You're looking at, you know, Frostproof to to Four Corners essentially to cover our staff. And that's a huge area. And then for them to have to, you know, go all the way to Jim Miles is like, really? Are you kidding me? I mean, I hear that time and time again. So this is very important. I get it. We have a year within which to do it. But if you can.
Right, yes, ma'am, I totally agree.
Do it throughout the district. It would be so very appreciated.
Yes, we've got several different models that we can put into place. And let me kind of clarify, I totally agree with you. To do it just at Jim Miles is not going to be efficient or making it accessible. So we could take it to the individual schools. But we do have a model by which if we had two or three schools in the same area that wanted to actually host it.
Ah, great.
So I meant that we would do a full continuum there. And the other piece there, Ms. Cunningham, just to clarify, is some of it could be face to face, some of it could be online. And that's kind of the hybrid model. I think that that's probably considering how we learn is probably the better model to do. You know, we have some that we could do majority online. But I do think it depends on what the teacher's schedule will allow. And we want to make sure we accommodate that at the same time, making sure that we move the reading needle forward.
And and the other thing is, we need to be certain that if we're going to do a hybrid model, as you called it, partially, you know, face to face and part of it being online, that's fine. Please ensure that the folks that are going out and doing the face to face are truly trained and are strong and are going to make an impact. Because I don't always hear that and people go, wow, can you believe this? I traveled to X and you're not going to believe it was a total waste of my time. I hate to hear that. I know we have to do it, but I'm saying make sure that the and then, like you said, if you can do one in different places where you can go to two or three schools, can band together. And then if I can't make that one because I have a previous, then maybe I could go to the next one, but I still don't have to travel all the way to Lakeland from the east side of the county.
I would want to be able to do something like Frostproof, and that would maybe that area.
Sure, right, sure, sure.
Do something with Spurfield, McLaughlin.
Just saying, all the way up, right. Thank you so much. Any other questions on this one? Okay, and Doc Aces will move to the student progression plan, and then we'll have our last discussion topic. And I know we're running tight on our time.
I I just want to throw out two things to you, Dr. Aces. All the PD that's done in school during the day, all that time, maybe we could look at that angle and also early release dates.
Yes, ma'am. It would depend if it's a school-wide initiative, that principal and staff can kind of work out together how they're going to roll those five competencies out. And I do think it's the right initiative if you were doing it school-wide. That needle moves, the district moves.
Right, and I want to thank you for making it no cost Superintendent Bird to teachers. Thank you.
Amen. Student progression.
Next is the SPP, the annual update on it. One of these two trusted assistants.
And just know that you have time for this. This document, it has to sit. One of the things we want to do is make sure that parents have time to see it prior to them leaving for summer. So that's why it's coming now. And how are you today?
Doing great, thank you.
So, um, ladies are kind of getting themselves situated. You have before you two different documents. I cannot take any kind of credit for creating these documents or facilitating the conversation. I'm so proud of the way that they're able to get it together. One is the SPP, and it's got the land changes in it. What I like the best is the executive summary. So I would focus on that.
That was great.
As Ms. Bird said, we do have thirty days for this to sit on the table. And as you go through it, as you have conversations with constituents about it, do not hesitate if you got a question to email me about it. And I would like to walk you through, or the ladies to walk you through, the executive summary if you need to or if you want to peruse it and then ask any questions as we go through it. But it literally goes page by page, the change that's in there and the rationale for the change.
So probably the easiest way to start is we've actually comprised a committee of APs and counselors at the secondary level and elementary level. And so really looking at the document so that they can make recommendations to the larger SPP committee, which is listed up in front of the executive or the first page of the executive summary. And we really wanted to make it as user-friendly as we can. This really becomes the guiding document for just about everything that happens on the campus academically with curriculum, student placement, athletics, anything that you can think of. This really is the go-to document. And so we've heard lots of feedback about making it a little more user-friendly. And so we spent a lot of time discussing how can we make that happen? And we had a shorter timeframe than we had anticipated this year. So went through, we had several people that read it from front to back. So often, if you're a high school person, you live in the high school section. If you're middle school, you live in the middle school section, elementary in the elementary. And so we had several people that went through from cover to cover, and we did lots of cleanup. Little errors or duplication of things, making sure there was consistent information. And so you're going to see a lot more cleanup than you've seen in the past because we really went page by page. And then the plan going into next year is to change the format based on the feedback and talking with regionals and the whole committee. So that, for example, if there's a topic that applies to all three areas, elementary, middle, secondary, applies to the different departments CTE, then we'll have one section so that it's written one time and we can ensure that it's consistent information each time. In the past, we may have it in three or four different places, and it gets changed in one place, but not completely changed in other places. And so we wanted to make sure that that happened. So that will happen next year. So as you go through the different changes, you'll just see lots of cleanup, making sure things are consistent and accurate across the entire document. There are not any major formative changes that I can think of. We've kind of went over it this morning. Nothing that is significant, if you will. A lot of it is just cleanup, making it match statute and make sure that we're complying with what we have to comply with and that it's consistent language in all the different pieces. Next year's going to be better. It's going to be easier. Definitely more consistent.
Some of the, so we're going to have time to review this, I understand, just going through it. Some things that are catching my attention, I'm just curious, this is based on statute is why we made changes?
So the SPP to have the document is statute.
Oh, yeah, I understand the document, but the changes that were made.
The changes make sure that our document matches statute document. Yeah, most. Some are practice implementation, how we do different things in the district just to document and actually formalize some of our practices in the district as well.
So if it if it formally read that they if a student scored below proficiency on statewide standardized tests, they may be enrolled in different remedial courses, and we're changing it to they must be. That's to match statute or that's a district decision?
It depends on the level, like level ones, independent level of the student is required. So that is actually, and the statute changes from one year to the next. One one year will say one scale score setting, but it just depends on what level of course it is.
But it did, it changed. It's it read must be, and now it's may be. It is because of the statute.
Well, it read may, and now it, right. I think it's and our focus, I think we've talked about a lot, is making sure students that we're grabbing students to get in these academies that may need those kinds of remedial courses and that not to prevent them from from having opportunities inside the academies. And that's my concern, changing language.
Yeah, it's provide flexibility based on individual students versus one fell swoop because of a one-day test score.
Thank you.
Ms. Towns?
What what changed in the nondiscrimination state statement, I wish?
We moved it.
That the 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 statement itself has not changed?
It was duplicated. It wasn't update from a couple of years ago. And and that was one of the things that came up from going from front to back. Because if I were to read that, I don't, to be very honest with you, I don't have that memorized. And and that actually came out from Dr. Steinkie. She goes, not only we were removing it, but then she's like, and that's an outdated policy, that discrimination statement. And so we got the updated one from the legal department, and I would have to research the exact change.
We had an OCR complaint a couple of years ago. They required us to make change in that statement as a whole. And that change wasn't reflected in the document.
Let me let me ask specifically, the nondiscrimination statement like like which apparently does not include ac- actual orientation, has is that a change? Because I I thought it did.
I would have to defer to. I'll remember that.
Wendy may be able to speak to that as well. I'm not sure.
Sexual orientation is not one of the areas that you include in that.
Well, please, please check on that as to whether our our specific one.
We'll check on it. I think that's why we bring this to you. All right. Any other questions on it?
And again, remember, this sits for thirty days. You're going to see that. So this is the time that we go through it, and you can go through and bring up things that we need to look at to address if it needs to be changed in there.
So if y'all remember, we talked last time, last board meeting, we had to sit on the table for thirty days and changing the testing of the EOL students. Anytime there's an update or statute change, we'll still bring that to you. Keep in mind, the session just ended, so we will be bringing some changes to you in regards to that as Wendy and Neola create those policies. So there will be a couple in there because there's a new graduation track that was created. And the fact that we can now count programming for some of the math, some CTE pieces there. But we I think that what Superintendent Bird always tries to achieve is that we get this in front of parents before they leave for the summer. Teachers sit on the table for thirty days, approve the main structure and changes that we put into place. And then we'll bring you another update. It'll have to be July or August based on those statute changes. So there will be some more that'll come. And the majority, I think the way that we kind of view it is you have state statute, you have state board rule, you have school board rule, and then this is the procedure a lot of time for how you implement those board policies. This is when the rubber is thrown at school.
Ms. Fortney?
I did have one quick question, Dr. Aces. Page twelve on the summary. The following was removed, the right of students to make up work on the fourth unexcused absence and all other days of unexcused absences per semester may be denied. We took that out because is that statute or? Because it doesn't say this aligns with state statute? Is that the second one?
I'm sorry?
It did not match Neola, so we must go backwards.
One of the things that we were trying to be very cognizant of are the different board documents. So the student code of conduct, the Neola policy, and trying to make them all consistent. We found those discrepancies as well. So this one was changed to match the current Neola policy.
And that that was my concern because our code of con- it there's all kinds of different things out there. Yes, you can make up the work. No, you can't make up the work.
And and that became a point of discussion. And so that's one thing that we'll continue on, and it's really to make sure that we are being consistent across documents as well.
So what is the state statute? Because see, I read this as the second paragraph was to align with the state statute. I read what I just read to provide students with better opportunity to make up work. Yes, sir. Twelve. No, on your business thing or your executive summary, sorry.
It's, yeah.
Well, maybe it's not the same as what I got printed here. It doesn't matter. I can talk to you later. I mean. I don't want to take time up just because I just know that that's a sticky.
Right.
It's the last entry on page eleven.
Okay, so it's not the same as this, this is twelve.
Okay, Ms. Reynolds, then Ms. Miller?
The this is awesome, just to kind of see what has changed. In the future, if we could also include if it's a statute or Neola, what document we're matching it to, that would, I think, answer a lot of our questions, so just in the future.
Is it the sixty-seven and a half hours to align with state statute? I'm really just trying to clarify. Does he?
That one is the statute.
Okay, and then the one above it was just to provide students with a better opportunity. So and that is what in our code of conduct, the will it state?
And it says the bona fide, and that was the part of the discussion is exactly what does bona fide mean? A student can receive instruction after school, before school, Saturday, and that would be included as part of that sixty-seven and a half bona fide instruction.
Yeah, I I get I get that. I'm I'm back to the makeup work. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Because that is a headache for kids that missed fifty days over, and then they all of a sudden they want to make up fifty days of work.
Right.
And that it happens.
I just want to comment and agree with Ms. Reynolds. Neola is a reference, I mean, different than a state statute change. Neola doesn't serve, it serves as a reference point. I don't know that we need to read it. It's not law. It's how it's an interpretation of law for us to help us understand. And they serve very limited number of counties that in this state, anyway. I just want to make sure that we're interpreting it locally with local control of some of that, different than a state statute, what is telling us what we have to do under Florida education laws.
Any other questions? And we'll make sure we make those notes in there and for thirty days. If you have any other comments, please email and let us know so that we can look at that.
Thank you for the feedback on the format.
And Madam Superintendent, I understand we do not have any discipline?
No, we don't. And I think we have two job descriptions, and I think, of course, we quickly unload as you see those as soon as we get the team.
Okay, so we will, we we have no discipline cases coming before us. So we will just continue this meeting on and finish up before we have our board meeting.
Bringing in job descriptions before you today. One is a behavior support specialist, and the other is a PBIS facilitator. Are there any questions on either position?
It says five positions for each.
That is correct. It is five positions for each.
This falls right into the big plan, right?
Right, we're still into the plan. Dr. Aces and Dr. Steinkie today, these positions align directly with that plan.
And these are physicians that we will hire, not contract through other services, other companies. And I thank you for including the job description. I just I know as a somebody who hears from the community a lot, we are spending a great amount of money on this. So we need to make sure we follow up with how it's how it's helping after we add those positions. Community wants to hear adding these positions has done this, you know, in the end, providing their services.
Any other questions on the positions?
I just have a quick question. How many salary grades are there?
That's a whole different conversation.
And why?
Yeah, really.
So that's professional technical side, there are eleven that I can count on right now. Eleven is well. Different salary grades, and within each of those grades, there are about thirty to forty steps.
Yeah. It used to be worse. Yeah, that was condensed considerably. Few years ago, we had a consultant come in. It was insane. And then trying to map them and make sure, oh, my goodness.
Yes, a consultant came in and reviewed everything. Yes, that is a condensed version. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the information items that are before you, and we did the Avid last, I think, last time. But it's on there, information for you. And Mr. Chair, turn it over. I know that we need to do a quick executive at some point.
Wow, good job. You hit it pretty close, right? Pretty close to the number. So I think Mr. Peron would like a few minutes for an executive session. So we're going to we're going to get, we're going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. I mean, if we have to, we may have the board meeting back a little bit, but we'll we'll see how that goes. So the first item of business is review of the school board agenda for this evening. Let me get to that real quickly.
I had a couple of questions on.
Okay, so let we'll we'll go through it, and when we get to those items, please let me know. We have some special recognitions. We have. We have, um, several sets of minutes. Any questions, comments about the minutes?
Already been in contact with.
Okay.
We're good to go on.
We have some new administrators, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, we do.
Alright, item C sixteen through item C twenty. Questions, comments. As usual, we have a lot of donations and we're always grateful to our, to our business partners in the community for those.
I did have on, uh, C nineteen, the invoice contract again.
Okay.
How, how do we, uh, how do we, I've asked this a couple of times and I'm still not understanding. How do we evaluate whether or not they're effective or not? Like, we evaluate everybody else. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, teachers are highly effective or effective or unsatisfactory. How do we evaluate these contracts? Like, to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do with the kids? Does that make sense? Invo, I'm on C nineteen.
And kinda with that, do we have somebody in their budget office that, that reviews contracts and, like, do we have a contract person? Who is that?
So, let, let's start with the first question first. And that was, and that, the question was.
I just, Dr. Sing, I've asked, kinda asked this, but you know what I'm trying to say? Like, there's no, like, score sheet.
No, there's not. What we have done though is we've been monitoring the data on the students that they support and serve and what kind of progress that those students are making. And if they're not making progress, why and how many that is. Um, we've been monitoring that throughout the year. Um, we don't have a formalized, like, final report for the year, cause the year's not over and we're still doing that. But part of the data tracking piece that we're trying to implement as part of the bigger plan for next year, bring some of that into it as well. There's also a customer service component of these contracts and some of them that we deal with. And I can tell you responsiveness, work with us, all that is. But any kind of formal checklist of, no, we don't have that.
Ms. Miller?
Can you identify the person that vets our contracts from the budget office?
Mr. Perom, that's fine.
Who is it?
There's a number of folks that review contracts. Jason reviews every one in the finance office. Um, we have, uh, Purchasing reviews them.
Yes.
Mr. Bridges reviews them. Carol Matthews reviews them. Uh, I can get you the list of who goes through and everybody looks at that before it comes in the agenda for a contract.
I think more than compliance, I think that's really a compliance base to make sure they're in compliance. I'm thinking more of, um, the opportunity to bid things out or the opportunity to learn of other, to, to other oper- you know, advent, other ventures that could help us save money in the long run. Do we have somebody, are they doing it by department? Or is there somebody that works on just contracts and vendors?
We do not have that. We talked about, um, having a contract office officer and having issue, but because of budgets, we've been at least not.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, moving on to item C forty through item C forty-four. I had a question about the FISH. Is there actually a schedule or is this just a notification or certification?
Just once it's required, we're, then every year we do an annual certification. It's an inventory of all of our schools, there was square footage or a number of portables that we have to submit annually.
But there's no schedule for it? It's just a certification? Okay, thank you.
No Mahi Mahi, darn.
We don't have any Mahi Mahi on.
Sounds like something they ought to be doing in Tarpon Springs.
That's right, amen.
Okay, so we have, back to school board business.
Sorry.
Uh, item C forty-four through C forty-nine. C forty-four through C forty-nine. On the sales tax nomination.
Yep.
Ms. Cunningham, I'll call on you to say some kind words and to make the nomination.
Thank you. I can introduce her, I will.
Items R fifty-one through R, R fifty-six.
On R fifty-two, the emergency authorization, cause I'm probably gonna get a phone call about this, can we give an example, like, that during hurricane, like, what, what would be an example that we would need, um, for that to ha- for that? And I thought we already probably had this in place. Where that would need to be used. We have to update that every year?
Yes.
It's an annual thing.
That was my question. Something that we've always done that needs to be updated. And then, um, my computer's slow, so one second. Can you, can someone talk a little bit more about fifty-nine, C, or R fifty-nine?
That's the Bass building. And this was.
Mrs. Miller, this is a building we own down in Fort Meade, the West Riverside Building. It has been vacant for some years now. And we did not have an identified use for it. View Beginning came over and asked for it to be able to use it. And following one zero zero two statutes, that's why it's before you today. We do have provision in the agreement that should we need the building, we, um, give them notice and a hundred and twenty days, they have to give it back to us.
I just didn't know if that would bring other charters wanting to know if they could use our empty buildings.
Possibly, but the good thing is this is the only one that we are available.
Not anymore.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And the extension, the lease extension on R sixty?
R sixty is, okay, this is what we refer to as the Bailey Road property in West Albury. We're not using it. So, um, a former is using it. I think it's for strawberries or something. It's on an annual basis. If we need it to build a school, then they'll give it back to us. It's only for one year.
Is it, are we making, are we using this to make revenue? Or are we just letting them grow crops on our land?
And maintain it. It is not much revenue. It's, it's a real minimal fee to have it.
Right.
They have to maintain it for us.
Lower it or.
Instead of keeping it vacant. But it helps us with our carrying costs.
It's where you got all your strawberries from.
Right, oh. Don't get rid of that. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, items R sixty-one through R sixty-six, and R sixty-six, Mr. Bridges, you'll be requesting a public hearing and make the motion, make the recommendation for a motion. Okay. Yes, sir.
On the, um, on the charter school recommendations, I think some of these were inconclusive when we were, were, like, subject to things. Did, did I hear that Bach has decided to go into Jenny Howard? Is that, is that what they're, what they're doing?
Hmm, first press.
No, they're going to charge.
First press.
Okay, but, but they, they, they have their, their, their location?
Yeah, and it's in there and you can see the drawing and everything. And I can explain it immediately. It's my church. It is? First press?
So I will be, um, asking for motions for these each separately, each on its own. Uh, among other things, I'll need to abstain from voting on the Lakeland Gateway, Mr. Bridges. So we'll go through these one at a time and make the motions one at a time on the, on the recommendations for the charter schools. Yes, sir.
Just, just, just to clarify, each of these recommendations then is the product of the discussion we had and then, and then kind of going back and milling through and this is what, okay.
Okay, so that's the agenda. Any other questions about the agenda in general? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry, I was trying to help with an article. Um, we had an issue with our bid recommendations. We pulled that item. But I'd like to have staff explain what happened. It was nothing to do with, uh, fault of our own, but it was a situation, so.
Which item was that, Mr.?
Um, and there's gonna be a little process going forward. I just want the board to be aware of what, what happened on bid recommendations was unsentimental.
So it's not on here now?
It's not on here, but I wanted to explain why we did that.
Which, what item was it previously?
It was the Microsoft contract. So it's our large Microsoft contract that we do annually. We had a three-year contract, which was just a renewal. But this last year, we had to go back, we had to go out to a full RFP, which we did, spent months on it and selected the, um, the aworder. We checked, we checked twice because there were, there was one item that was priced extremely low compared to all others. We checked twice with them and they, are you sure you're gonna honor this price? Are you sure you're gonna honor this price? Oh, yeah. And then yesterday afternoon, that, we got an email from somebody else in the company that said, we're pulling the bid. So.
So we had to remove it from the, well, what they, they indicated was that the information that we received was incorrect and that this person had just gotten that, gotten word of that. Now, it's been posted as a recommendation since May first. So it was kind of, um, disappointing that we didn't hear anything from them, even after we double-checked with them to ensure that, that they knew and that they would, they would hold their pricing. So, um, we've had to pull that recommendation. We, we got with the next vendor, next, um, lowest vendor, and they have, they will go ahead and hold their pricing. So we've got a new recommendation posted. What we're, what we're running up against now is a very tight timeline. Our current contract for a Microsoft licensing, which we have to have, expires on March, or May thirty-first. So we don't have another board meeting between now and then to get a, a new recommendation to you. So, um, we do have a, um, board-approved procedure that we can ask the superintendent, once we get past the protest period, ask the superintendent to approve the recommendation and then we would bring it back to you at the June board meeting to ratify the recommendation. Wes would review the, the bid file and the recommendation and then we would bring it down to Mrs. Bird and if she signs it, we'll have it in place in time.
Our challenge was that we have a seventy-two hour period, once we post it back up for somebody to protest it. We don't think they will, but that was our concern.
Here's my question. Um, we've been with Microsoft, right?
It's still Microsoft.
It's, it's Microsoft licensing, but companies are resellers, so.
They don't sell direct to us.
Okay, okay. So there's not gonna be a, what, right now, what we're doing is trying to find the most appropriate pricing structure, but we would get the same package that we've used to. It's my question.
We're purchasing it like a commodity.
Yes, exactly right. Okay, just, just trying to understand. Alright, thank you.
Apologize you found out yesterday.
I get that. That's life.
And that, and that was on, originally on the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
It was, yes.
That's why the bid recommendations we revised, is we had to, to pull their recommendation for the Microsoft only.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, discussions about the board, this evening's board agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I was in at the last meeting. I was wondering if somebody can explain to me, the projected enrollments for a couple of these schools and why such a big interest?
Yes, ma'am.
Bachmore and Discovery.
Going to seventh grade. Adding a grade level. Yep.
If I'm wrong, we're calling it grade level, I think it was adding another two hundred. What was the other one?
Discovery also, same thing.
Was the same thing.
Yes, and they were asking for more than what, uh, they are currently, they currently didn't need the seats that you already given them. And, uh, we went back to the original contract, if I remember, if I remember certainly correct, and we actually are honoring what the charter school contract is. Uh, and the rationale behind that, Ms. Fields, was that, uh, if you over-project a lot, uh, it could put them a little bit in a financial distress if we overpay them during, uh, July and August. So there was a little bit of concern there. It just wasn't that we were hesitant to give them the seats. It's that they've not, they haven't filled the seats we've given. Uh, and it's just kind of a little bit of an oversight there to make sure that, um, what we do give them, what we pay them for in July and August is actually students.
They were asking for the two twenty-five. We only gave them the one fifty, which takes them to their, what's in that contract? A total of eight fifty.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the strategic planning agreement contract with Dr. Freo. Dr. Freo, if you could come forward, please, in case anybody has any questions. I think we have, uh, we find ourselves in a position where we're, we're now only needing a one, a one-time-a-year strategic planning.
Right.
Right? So that's a good thing. And thank you for working with staff to get us there.
If I can make a, a comment at the end, cause I, I listened to the presentation a bit earlier with the, a consultant who is gonna be working with you on the school climate. And I heard the concerns about, you know, to what degree are we gonna be able to build this into our strategic plan and to have some sort of measure of progress through time, which I think is extremely important and, and we've had that discussion already. I think there are really two purposes to this in terms of the measurement. One is for the development of principals and others who are gonna be involved in this. District staff, et cetera. And for those purposes, I think that, that probably is a little bit outside of the measurement of progress. I don't think you wanna get down to the individual level of measurement of progress, but I think that in the beginning, there should be some baseline aggregate measures. And then after a period of time, then look at those same measures after a year or two years as you move along to be able to see whether there's progress being made or not. And I think that's what should be built into the strategic plan. We don't have it here right now, but I think that that's something that we need to be working on and incorporating in the strategic plan to address that very important factor that the board expressed an interest in, which was climate.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Freo? Okay, thank you, Dr. Freo.
Comments? You're wonderful. We appreciate you. Thanks for your leadership.
Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm sort of getting a feel now for the full ramification of saving the best for last. Thank you.
Okay, so before we go to, um, executive session, do we have any board member comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Real quick, um, as most of you know, I have been serving as the Florida School Boards Association Board of Director for our board. And, um, that term is coming now to an end. And so we need to appoint, if we can, by consensus is what we usually do cause it always happens this time of year. It's the only odd one out, a new person, um, to fill those shoes. And, um, after much, um, discussion, I would like to nominate Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds to serve as our next board member on the Florida School Boards Association. I think she would do an excellent job. She has filled in for me when I have not been able to go to a meeting. Um, and, uh, she's very interested in public policy and government and, uh, I think you would be just wonderful. So, um, if that is okay with you. Okay. How does the rest of the board feel?
How do we feel? What's the consensus of the board?
And then in addition to that, we will also need to appoint someone to be the alternate for her in the event that there may be times that she cannot attend. So obviously, it's open for discussion if anybody would like to volunteer for that as well.
I would love to, I would love to appoint Sarah Fortney to nominate Sarah.
As the alternate. The two Sarahs?
You go to Orlando?
No, these are in Tampa and Tallahassee.
Tampa and Tallahassee.
But it's with the Tallahassee, but like, they schedule them with their conferences and with their.
Other events. So you're not going up for one meeting?
So we could actually save money on the name day.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So we have.
Consensus then?
Ms. Reynolds as the, our representative and Ms. Fortney as our alternate.
And then you'll be so kind as to make sure that Florida School Boards Association knows prior to attending the annual conference in June. It would be appreciated.
I'm trying to do master board anyways, so.
And in way of consensus, any objections by any of the board members? Very good.
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Okay, any other board comments? Yes, sir.
Two, two things related to our meetings. Um, one, I would like to see if there's agreement on the board that any, anytime a governing official, like a fellow elected, uh, official or, like, 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 say a city, city, city commissioner or a city man, manager, whatever, comes to present something to us, that they are put on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, we had an incident last week where somebody had to wait for the entire meeting after all that happened at the end and then go in it. Uh, I think that really shouldn't happen. Um, so is there any disagreement with that, that if, that if someone's coming to?
No, and it put me in a tough spot.
I was gonna bring that.
So, 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 okay, so moving, moving ahead, any elected official, any, 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 are you, what are you curious?
Well, I just, I, if they come in later, they just have to sit there and wait their turn. I mean, I would.
Let me clarify.
Sorry, what are you trying to?
I'm trying to get somebody to do a presentation and somehow it didn't get added to the first part of the meeting. It was directed to be comments at the end.
Yeah, it, it was like a normal presentation that they got stuck on to, to the end. And they had long ago tried to get on. had long ago tried to get on the...
Okay.
So...
That's something between you and the chair.
So, it wasn't just walking in.
Okay, I thought maybe, because I was like, otherwise, I mean...
No, they weren't just walking in.
Okay.
No, if they're acting in their official capacity.
For a presentation.
For a presentation, yes.
Right, right.
I think that would be most appropriate as part of a special presentation.
Yes.
Sort of related to that, but not really. I also think it's time that we just go ahead and add the citizen comments to the recordings at the end of the meeting. For some reason, we cut them off after the board members talk. I mean, I guess I under, actually, I really don't understand why we do that, but I just think it's kind of, you miss some pretty important things. So, like, that whole discussion about guns, it isn't on, isn't on any video. I mean, somebody can get a DVD, but I just think it's, if we're going to video our meetings, let's just video them all. I mean, the Lakeland City Commission videos, all of theirs. As far as I know, we're like the only governing body that cuts off, is in comment. I just don't think that makes any sense. So, is there anyone who just, who, I mean, are there four votes to go with putting all of the meetings?
I say yeah.
I don't agree.
I have a little bit of a challenge concerning that, too.
I do, too.
Ms. Fields?
There was a progression after doing that.
Yes.
A long time ago, custom, wearing standing and other things that was done at the end of the meeting, and I would like to hear Ms. Jackie's take on that.
As far as, you know, I think that having them, when you, we cut them off at the end, and that was the reason being, because of what we had before, was to just stop the comments at that point, and just have it for the meeting, actually. If it's the wishes of the board to have those aired now, at this point, then we'll make that possible, but that was the reason for it.
I know other districts do include recordings, so I haven't been here long enough to know why it would be a negative thing. I know what, there was a ton of them at the last one, and now I'm forgetting who was who and when they spoke. I would use it as a reference. And I also think some of the stuff that comes up, people may think twice before, you know, what they're going to explain, if it's going to be factual, and what they're going to do, if they know it's going to be part of recordings. I know other districts do record, because being an advocate for a long time, they would purposely print when they were going to go and list the recordings, so people could see, I am trying to bring up certain issues to your board. But I wasn't here long enough to know why that might be a negative thing.
Ms. Reynolds?
I know there was some concerns brought up before about people using specific student information and having that on, which obviously, it's a public meeting, it's public record, but especially if it's not the parent talking about a student, if it's a grandparent, or aunt, or uncle, or that, to give information about a student specifically, in detail, and then it be on YouTube. So, I would say if we are going to do that, to, if we could maybe make comments at the beginning, you know, please don't disclose individual student information.
Or you would edit it out.
Or something like that.
Or we'd have to edit it.
So, just to be cognizant of that.
I'm fine with that, that one.
Well, I think the challenge we had before were folks coming forward on a routine basis, and just always reiterating the same thing, and I think they, the sense was they were doing that for airtime.
Right.
But I don't think we've ever put the citizen comments off, because we weren't airing the meetings at all, until about, until about a year, a year and a half ago, or two, two years ago.
We've been finished forever.
No, no, not, 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 not on, not the, I mean, the putting the thing up, after, in the aftermath, is new.
That is, there's some history here. This conversation came up the first time in the context, before we were streaming it and just putting it up, because back in the day, that technology had not yet developed, and we did not have access to it. So, what we were doing is we were recording these things in conjunction with the county's broadcast studio, and we had trucks and whatnot and big equipment, and it was having to be edited for broadcast on, well, it wasn't, it was a PC...
PGTV.
PGTV.
Right.
For PGTV. So, it was being produced for that purpose and edited to a time slot. So, that was part of it, and the other one was what Ms. Reynolds mentioned, that so frequently, parents come and say things about their own student or other students, that while those, while those things are public, because they've been said in the public set, setting, it still caused a moral headache, an ethical headache, for people when that was broadcast. And if you want to edit that out, that means we've got to make sure that we have somebody who not only has the technical skills to do it, but has the knowledge of how to identify a material that shouldn't go out. So, that's how, that's how that came about. It was, it was before streaming. It was when it was being edited for broadcast on PGTV.
I've watched YouTube videos from, or cellphone videos of comments, so I don't know that we're not, not having it happen, if people can hold their phones up and record comments during the meeting.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's public. It happened in the public.
Right.
It's out there.
Right.
But, but the question is, do you, do you wish to compound a situation that a student may find embarrassing by broadcasting it, so that many people who otherwise would not have seen it now have? So, yeah, it's public. If a parent comes and speaks about their child, it's public. If it's disciplinary, if it's behavioral, if it's academic performance, of course, the more dangerous one is when it's not that, the parent of that student.
Right, right.
It's the neighbor, or the, or the parent of the other student coming to complain about somebody else's student. And those sorts of things are, you know, they are certainly ticklish.
Right. I've used them for other districts to get information on certain ideas that other districts were moving towards, that had a lot of community feedback. So, it's been helpful that other districts do it. I have not been in this chair long enough to know or heard of anything that would have been hurtful.
I mean, we started doing this when, you know, for a while, I was putting the videos up on my own with, just with the DVDs, because we weren't putting them up where people could access them after the meeting to go back and watch them. And then we started putting them up on our, on our own, which I was pleased with, but they cut off the citizen comment at the end. I mean, in the few years I've been here or so, I haven't heard any, anybody attacking anybody else's child, certainly not by name. Yeah, I'm fine with giving a please, you know, you're on TV, so please behave yourself accordingly. That might, that might even affect behavior. Ultimately, there are important discussions happening in that part of the meeting. We had a very important part of the meeting last week that was in that part that nobody has seen now, except on TV. I mean, through a very narrow, you know, televised aspect of things, I just think it's kind of silly to pretend like it didn't happen. I mean, so, why don't we just do it? I mean, and it really, it looks like it comes down to the start of us, so...
Well, let's, we'll have a consensus. Ms. Fields, how do you feel about it?
I don't really have a problem with the, we've been videoed as long as it's understood, that we're not going to accept negativism. Ms. Jackie has been placed in a bad way before, in name-calling by individuals that are going to have to be shut down, and we just would not tolerate that, if that's understood. They're going to have to be, an explanation given. This is what we expect, and if you can't adhere to that, then you need not come up and have your three minutes. I don't know how you say it, but anyway.
We'll see if we...
I think that, I agree, the chair needs to, because in the past, I've watched things happen, that I was reading from the audience, the chair would stop. So, I think the chair, it kind of relied, that's something Ms. Reynolds wanted to take on, but I agree that it should be the expectation given, and if someone steps too far to line, you're the chair of the board, and I think you should call them on what they're doing.
I feel the same way, but I think there's got to be ground rules. I think that's what everybody's saying, and the ground rules need to be specific. And, you know, once somebody crosses that line...
You run into the First Amendment.
Pardon me?
You run into the First Amendment.
I know that, I know that. So, where is that line?
If you're going, you know, if you're going to create the forum, then you have to be content neutral on what people say in that forum. You know, so if they choose to come address you about, about one thing, it's hard, hard then to tell them that they can't speak to you about another, a less popular thing.
No, but the tone they take and their manner of speaking can be addressed.
Yeah, you can, you can regulate profanity and vulgarity and things of that nature.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think, I mean, from basically what I said earlier, if it's about a student, I just want to make sure that we're not publishing a video. If it's not something that we would type out and make into a Facebook post, this person said this about another student, then I don't think we should be publishing it as a video, especially if it's not the parent of the student, or whoever their legal guardian is.
I would be happy to reach out to the school board attorneys and ask the question...
Could you?
Of what, what are the, how are the districts are handling that particular issue?
I just worry about some, you know...
Yeah, I'll be happy to do it.
My kid's mad at little Joey down the street.
Every time.
Not going to tell you all of his business, and then we're going to post it on all over.
Well, just very quickly, to finish this up, I know at the last meeting, we talked about having some interaction between the board and the speakers, and as board chair, I'm okay with that, as long as it's just between the board member and the speaker, and we don't bring in other folks to talk, because I think what happens then, as you get into a discussion at the podium, that is, in my opinion, inadvisable.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, finish.
And I'm happy to, as I have done, I'm happy to continue reminding folks that if they, that they should not be making, that they should not be addressing board members or superintendent or staff in a negative way, and if they want to do that, they should address me, and I'm happy to hold them to that, so we can try it from that perspective. But I think the bigger issue from my, from my perspective is, is the issue about children being named, students being named, and while I'm happy to intervene, I don't, I may miss that. You know, there's a lot going on, and I may not catch that somebody's not, all of a sudden is not talking about their own child, right? I mean, if they want to come there and talk about their child, I suppose that's their business, but, you know, they start talking about their child. So, Mr. Bridges, I would need help with that, is all I'm saying. Yes, ma'am.
Going back to your comment, I did at the last meeting, which I normally, or I don't think I've ever done, actually asked Tedra to speak, and I did so for a reason. Knowing more about that situation and the individual, I knew that we needed to come and be able to address what had been done and so forth, and that's the only reason I said, yeah, I would really like for you to speak. I didn't really know what you were going to say, but I felt like, had you not spoken, it would have left a lot of people wondering, and with the way in which you eloquently addressed the situation, anybody sitting in the audience would go, oh, okay, I get it now. Had you not spoken, I don't know the people, and that's again, going back to your thing about transparency and people knowing, sometimes I think like they need to leave, they're hearing both sides. Golly, you know? It's not always where we've messed up, and we got a problem, and here we go, there's the district again. In that situation, I knew that that was not the case. That's why I looked up, I said, yeah, let her speak, please.
Thank you.
So, okay, because that bothered me.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
Well, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch the work session video, and I am totally against board members being able to be back and forth with people in the audience. I think that if there is a question or concern, that the chair should be able to direct to the superintendent, and superintendent should be able to respond if she needs to get staff to come up and to address that. I think that's the most appropriate thing. I think that you're opening up a can of worms by doing that. So, I wasn't here, and it looked like you guys had consensus that you were going to start doing that, and I can only imagine what this is going to end up looking like, but I would not, I'm not in support of it, and I just want to make sure that it's on record. But I think that it's a very bad practice for us, even Starrett.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Reynolds, excuse me, Ms. Fields, thank you.
Just going off what Laurie was saying about having Tedra come up, I think is a great example last time, that I think 99.9% of the time, most of the things that are said that need a response, I would rather the staff member in charge of that area respond. And I do think that there's several instances that having them respond publicly is a much better PR move than having them respond behind the swinging doors.
Yeah.
So, I think, I mean, using the superintendent's discretion of when those times are, is probably a good rule of thumb, but I do think, I mean, I would encourage you to, if it's something like that, to let her respond to the public, not just take them outside.
I'm going to say this again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of having a discussion at the podium. I don't want to get in between that. I think that there's too great an opportunity for an argument to entue, and, you know, I know it sometimes at, for example, at city commissions and board and county commission meetings, they do that, but they also gavel people down and have them removed physically. And I don't want, I don't think that's appropriate for a school board. I see, I've seen that happen many times, when they, when you have that back and forth, that somebody has to be removed forcibly from the room, and I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for a school district. So, what I've, so what I've done is I've talked to the superintendent about this, and we've come to an agreement that if something needs to be said, she would, she will do that. She will speak if something needs to be said about her, or she will, she will invite staff.
The staff, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, but not, not between board member and person.
Right.
Right, okay, I got it.
You're welcome to have a conversation, but please, if we need to have staff involved, let's get the superintendent involved.
Right. I mean, that just, I mean, the example, last week, you had the stuff with the guns, and superintendent gave a great statement about that, and we were able, I mean, the folks wanted to hear a political response to what they were saying. I mean, political, not political, they wanted to hear what their left officials had to say. That's, to me, that's not really getting in a conversation with the, it's just being responsive. And I just, I'm just not afraid of the public. I mean, I, there, I mean, I've, yeah, I've been chewed out up there. It's, comes with the territory. We have a certain amount of power. All we're talking about today is not how people come, it's if, it's if we're going to put those interactions on video, and I think a lot of really important interactions have happened there. I mean, with the 800 megahertz system have happened without, without Denise Williams coming all the time, her family, and that, that's an important dialogue that nobody saw, because we, because we never put it up there. Like, I mean, for every bad, unpleasant comment, there are three or four that are constructive and helpful, and that the public ought to see. And I trust the public to make those judgments for themselves. And I'm fine with Sarah Beth's point about advising, look, if you start to talk about somebody else's kid, you're, bam, like, I'm fine with that. No one's done it, that I'm aware of. I can't, I can't remember any incidents like that. So, let's just, anyway, so, is that rough consensus that we're going to move forward with that?
Yeah, if you're good.
Yeah, that's okay. And again, but again, and I, I'm not afraid of the public. I don't, I mean, if they want to come and chew me out, that's their property. My concern is, the bigger concern is, having folks down there who have different points of view, you've got them at the podium at the same time, and that gets out of hand. I don't want to see, I don't want to have a situation where we're having somebody removed from the audience.
Right.
I don't think that's appropriate for a school board. They can do that at county commission meetings and cities, city meetings, but I think, I think as a school board, we have a, I think we, we have a higher standard to attain. No disrespect for any of our elected officials.
Okay. I have a, I have a suggestion. Sounds like there's a consensus to allow the taping of the comments after the public. That's what we're saying.
Yes.
I would like to ask, if you would, that we not do that tonight, that we start perhaps in the next meeting, to give you some time to sit down, because what's going to be important to me is that you word, and I know it's uncomfortable, you're going to have to come up with something, and I understand the free speech, I get all that, but there could be a nice way in which you could say, and draft up whatever language with you, to where you've kind of laid it out very quickly, here's the da-da-da parameters, and now, you know, who would, and then call your first person, but I feel like you need time, not 20 minutes to try to put that together so that it's effective.
That's fine, that's fine.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, we're already tape, we're already taping them. If you want to see them, this is about broadcasting.
I understand.
So, I mean...
I understand, okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Are we coming back after we've finished the session? Are we coming back after we fin- finished presenting, or this is it?
This is it.
Yeah, are we coming back?
Are we having an executive session?
Well, we, we might, I, I don't know if that's yet, that's yet to be determined. I think at this point in time, it's clear, we're gonna have to push the school board meeting back a little bit, because we're not gonna be able to get through it.
I wanted to talk about the Bridge Prep Academy.
Yes, ma'am, as do I, so thank you for bringing that up.
So, I just wanted to make sure that this would be an appropriate time to do that.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I wasn't at the last work session and I understand that it was a tie vote and as a result, the application was to not move forward. And I guess the question, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, I'll start with a statement. For years, we've always, we've heard that East Polk County does not get the same level of services as other pockets of the county. And we know that there is a tremendous amount of overcrowding and growth in that area. And when Bridge Prep came before us, Bridge Prep originally wanted to do Lakeland and conversation was developed to target East Polk, since that's the area where we need help. And so, my question is to Ms. Jackie, what recommendation would you offer to us to allow us to bring more resources to ease the overcrowding in East Polk? And if you still have the stance that you had earlier about having conversation with Bridge Prep to work on some of those efficiencies that were on the application, so that we can come back to review those recommendations from you to move the application forward, if we're able to do that?
Okay, and I know, Ms. Fields, you, you weren't here at the last one. And I did say, you know, before that, the reason that we were bringing it back, because there are some things that we need to do and get them to clear up. One was that in the application they had to build in South Lakeland. But, you know, after they presented that day and they talked to board members, they were committed to building in northeast, because that's what the board said, they need the help for that area with the overgrowth that we're having up there. When I made the recommendation to allow them to go to the contract negotiation phase, it was so that we can go through, clear up those things that they had in the application. One was location, two is looking at some of the instances that they had with the budget in there, that they were providing information to, which they provided after that meeting. And then, if they did not clear that up during the contract phase, that then the board would take the vote. And if the board wanted to move forward, they could, if they did not, at that point, they could. That was my stance then, that will still be my stance, because I know the northeast area. They were committed to this board about not doing, making it in the South Lakeland area, but in northeast, to help with overcrowding and growth up there. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and then my other question, I don't know if you can answer this or Wes will answer this. They go before the state for an appeal, what would the school be located if they were in the appeal? Based on the application now?
My understanding is that, that the application now, they have represented that the, that they would plan to do it in the northeast.
But what does the application currently say?
I, I would, I would have to ask, I think. Carolyn's here, I think it still says South Lakeland. If they made that represent, that representation, I'm not sure if there is, has been a, a written communication of that or not. We'd have, we'd have to ask the charter office.
And South Lakeland is not where we need the help.
Correct.
We need help in East Polk. That, that was, I just wanted to, again, I wasn't here when we, when y'all had the session.
And of course, if they, if they made those representations, the, the, the video recording of that, of that meeting could be an exhibit at the appeal.
Okay.
So, I have, go ahead.
I had one thing else, 'cause you were talking about video and transparency. Since we've moved these extended work sessions, round tables or whatever we're talking about now, further up in the day, you know, that's how we planned the last couple of ones. I'm, and they're currently only voice recorded. In the name of transparency and sharing with the community the discussions, I think those need to be videotaped as well. And I didn't know what the board members thought of that, because we don't, we have not had an opportunity to discuss it.
Yeah, I absolutely think those should be recorded, I think so.
Video as opposed to just audio.
What do you gain?
It's just audio.
It's currently just audio.
Right, what do you gain by video versus audio?
If it's done and you can't do a recording in here, there's no recording in here, then it will have to be done where they're doing a recording in the auditorium. That's where, right, that's where it's recorded.
But the work sessions are recorded in here, videoed in here.
No, only voice, right?
Can they, can they do that?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're on video.
Okay. We're on video in here?
Yes.
I did not know that till today.
You don't have press releases that give us the links, Rachel.
Yeah, but why would I watch that again when I've been here?
Sorry.
Okay.
Beautiful film.
I have no idea.
So, let me, I, I, I want to, first of all, the last, at our last work session, there was discussion about tracking suicides and reporting to the superintendent. I don't think we ever talked about how we're gonna construct that written policy and how it's gonna come forward to the board. So, I wanted to bring that back and, and Madam Superintendent, ask you how we, from a practical perspective, how we get that policy written. Do, does that go, should that go to Ms. Dodge, Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry.
We're back on the topic, did we have a consensus that we were gonna videotape work, round table, work sessions?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we did.
What's, is there any additional staff requirement for it? Is there?
We're doing it during the day while they're here.
Yeah, they're just have to come in.
And hit it by.
Turn, turn them on or off.
Yeah, it's, it's a meeting of the school board, you're gonna have an agenda, you're gonna have minutes, you're gonna have a recording.
Okay.
It's, it, it is rapidly starting to appear much like a work session.
Absolutely, that's all it is.
Even though it wasn't supposed to be.
I'm not sure that.
I don't believe it's a work session.
It, no, it, it, it has, it has the same components.
Everything's the same.
It's a public meeting, it's noticed, the board's here, there's an agenda, there are minutes, and it's recorded.
But the agenda is, is.
Agenda is open, agenda, right, right.
It is, it's generic.
Yes, right.
But it, it is meeting of the school board and all of the two eighty-six formalities we observe.
Yes.
Okay, so, I think we have a consensus on that. We talked about tracking suicides and reporting back to you, exclusively to you. Do you recall that conversation? And I guess the question is, who was charged with the responsibility of drafting that policy and bringing it to the board? Have we, did we ever decide on that?
I don't think so. I mean, I think my idea to simplify it was to do it maybe like twice, twice a year at the beginning of the first, at the end of the first semester, end of the second, sort of, so we kept, so something on in the position of, so it's like a cumulative report, but I'm up to.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna, you know.
Well, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that that was actually adopted. Do we, do we, I can't remember if we.
Well, before, before it can be voted on, it has to be written and reviewed. So, we need somebody to write it before we can vote on it, if, if it's gonna be a formal policy.
What is it that you guys are discussing?
Ms. Fields wasn't here.
Was that last time?
So, we, we talked about tracking suicides and then reporting those to the superintendent to make sure that she was aware of a policy ensuring that superintendent, not the general public, but just the superintendent was aware of suicides and I'm assuming.
Actually, I think you're conflating two things. Sorry.
I apologize.
One, one, one was just some kind of regular report to the, to the board about, about suicides in, in, in our, in, with kids who are in our schools, whether they be in, in the school or if we learn about it outside, outside, outside of the school. To my understanding, we already track that to some degree. All I was suggesting is that we make it policy or habit that it is done at the end of the first semester, end of the second, I guess, semester, so we're aware of it. The second thing was, when there are repetitive allegations against somebody for, who, who is, who is investigated more than once for, for, for some kind of misconduct with, with one of our employees, that the superintendent is notified automatically, doesn't come to us. But, and, and the reason for that, this goes back to the, the, the issue in Dade County, where they had the guy who was like six or seven times accused of pretty serious, serious, serious things. Those were the two things. I, the, the suicide is just a board, board report. Doesn't have to get into, obviously doesn't have to get in, get in names, you know, it's to be as anonymized as possible.
Okay.
Let me, can I make a suggestion on, on that? With the new student behavior response plan that's coming in, so I feel that that is already gonna be in there, be, and he's not here.
I'm, I'm open to building that in to, to.
Right, because to me, that would show a repeats, immediately my mind, now, had we not had this discussion today, I think you're absolutely correct and other stuff. But with this, I feel that that's gonna be the place to capture it, to keep track of multiple times and a certain individual and so forth. So, I would hope and pray that it would be part of the student behavior response plan. Am I on the right, I don't know.
And that's something we can get with the team, because.
Sarah's shaking her head. I'm thinking HIPAA, I'm thinking.
I was getting ready to say, some of the information that we get from the sheriff's office, we don't send out all of it because of.
And you wouldn't be putting it in here.
We don't be putting everything in there.
Okay, I don't know all that, okay.
And then, also, I want to clarify, we've actually had a couple of incidents. The parents have asked us not to say what happened or how. We've actually been, been asked that.
And they have that right to do.
Yes, we've actually been asked that, do not state. Listen as an accident.
I'm not asking for that. It's, it's, we had three suicides this semester, we had four, like, like, that's what I'm looking for. It, it's pretty simple, I'm not really looking for.
But I think that, Mr. Johnson, I think the issue is that we might personally know that that's what it was, but because we were required to report it and state it, we wouldn't be able to share that. And so then, what we're telling you would be almost misleading information. And maybe that's, we can get more clarity, a lot of the information is also reported by the Department of Health. We might need to come that, through that avenue to give you updates, but I've got some more information. Kind of, we've been researching it since the last meeting was discussed and trying to figure out what can we provide? Because I know you guys are interested, obviously, in that information, but also being protective of the details.
Do you need more time then? Is that what, to find out in which way?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
So, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that the staff's working on finding.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm content with that.
Okay.
I, I know there are complexities on, but what I want, what I want to know is, do we have ten kids, do we have two?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I want to know.
So, I have some comments about Bridge for, Bridge Prep, Bridge Prep that I'd like to make. I, I don't think we're gonna be starting our school board meeting at five o'clock. It's gonna be, we're gonna start late, I don't, and I, I don't know what time that will be at this point in time. We'll know in a few minutes. But a few comments about Bridge Prep. Recently, a couple of our board members received a letter from Mr. Arza related to the Bridge Prep contract, charter contract. And I want to offer these comments. I thought that letter was misguided, was terribly inappropriate, ill-conceived, ill-advised, and terribly unfortunate. It, it seemed to infer that some of our board members at least were not conducting themselves consistent with their constitutional responsibilities. And I take great exception to that. We may disagree as a board, sometimes we disagree with each other strenuously. But there's no question in my mind that every board member here is doing, is doing what they believe they need to do and is voting their conscience as relates to their constituencies and to the students of this school district. So, I take great exception to that. And I'm going to make a public appeal to Mr. Arza to apologize to those board members. I think, again, that was ill-advised, completely inappropriate. Having said that, when we voted on this issue at the last meeting, I know, I did not share my thoughts about why I voted for the contract, and I'd like to share those at this time. It is traditionally, it's traditional that public facilities are funded with public dollars and those re- remain in the public venue. They belong to the school district and at some point in time, the school district may dispose of them, may give them to another governmental entity or sell them and reinvest that money in facilities. What we have now is a little different. We have a situation now where public funds are ostensibly going into the coffers of the private sector. And I think there are many who find that distasteful and objectionable and a lot of other things. But it's not, that's not a reflection of Bridge Prep, in my opinion. I, I think that's a reflection of our state legislature. I think Bridge Prep is just doing what any other charter school district would do under the law. So, I don't, I don't hold that against them. I think the concern here is that, based on the contract they have written, and Ms. Bridges may have some, Ms. Bridges may have some comments about this, based on the contract we currently have with them, if this goes to appeal and we lose, in my opinion, as Ms. Fields was saying, we lose the ability to influence that contract. We lose the ability, in my opinion, to, to influence where they're gonna build. We lose the ability to influence the students that they take in. And I think that, I think from my perspective, I, I would rather us have that influence and have that control and, as opposed to taking a chance on losing that. We had some folks who were concerned that it's a, about what they were doing in that area, and I agree completely. I agree with this, with our teacher, with Ms. Fortney. We can provide those services and we should, if we have the resources to do so. The problem is, we simply don't have the resources to do so. And that's why I think, that was one of the reasons that I voted for that particular contract. Even after our new schools are built in the northeast part of the, of the county, we're still gonna be overcrowded and busting at the seams. And any, I think, any, any help we can get for our students out there and for our staff in that part of the county is, we should be, we should be doing. So, with that said, there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion, there's some discussion in the paper about a reconsideration vote. That is not a possibility, that would have had to take place at the original meeting. I want to make that clear, it's a technicality. I don't want, I don't want, at some point in time, regardless of what happens here, for our school district to be held up on some technicality. There cannot be a reconsideration vote. There however can be a renewal vote. And, and that renewal vote motion can be brought forward by any school board member. The school board chair has the authority to disregard or to not allow a motion to move forward if it's frivolous or irrelevant, or generally not consistent with what is, would be the good business of the school district. And so, a vote already taken, in my opinion, if it came before the board a second time, would, would be frivolous and, and irrelevant. However, we have some extenuating circumstances here. It was a tie vote and one of our board members was not able to, be here that evening, was not able to participate. That, in my opinion, is an extenuating circumstance. So, given that, if any board member would like to make the motion to renew that, 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 the superintendent's recommendation, and I will only consider that particular motion to renew the superintendent's recommendation at this evening's meeting, I will, I will entertain that motion and entertain a second and additional comments and a vote on that. Yes, sir?
Should that ha- happen, I would ask that we postpone that vote until the next regular meeting, which would allow the public that has developed some interest in this to be able to comment on it. You know, I, I think there was not, this wasn't on the agenda. Presumably, a month won't matter. When, when is our next meeting, June?
June.
June something, June twentieth, something like that.
But it was on the last meeting and somebody came and spoke.
Right, well, but, but, but a lot's happened, a lot's happened since, since then.
Procedurally, there's an issue. And that is that the, under the law, the district sends out a denial letter within ten days after the initial vote, which, which we did. And their clock runs from that day and they have thirty days from that day to file their appeal, which they've indicated that they will. So, if we, if, if it were to be delayed, it's likely that we will be into the appellate process by that time. Of course, if the board at that time voted to approve it, they can withdraw their appeal. Presumably, they would, I don't know. But right now, we're, the, the time clock's running and it will run before the next board meeting. They would have to file their brief and incur those attorney fees and expenses.
Yes, Ms. Miller?
I have a comment as a board member that was targeted by one of those letters. What you're saying is true, we desperately need help in the northeast area. We also are responsible for the quality of help that we're giving them. And I've been contacted by people in South Florida who are affected by these schools and I know that they're, they have great performance records. Having a board made up of people who do not live in Polk County, who all meet together once, with, they're the same board members that share all the different schools, I could, I cannot imagine, you love my cold today, 'cause it's hard to get out. I cannot imagine, in Polk County's best interest, allowing people that do not live here, make decisions and have input on what the students' services will look like, how they'll be performed. And with the example of behavior that was written with those letters, I can only assume.
those letters, I can only assume that the rest of that establishment runs like that. And I cannot put my, I would never back, I've never seen this in another, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, watching the board meetings for years, I have never seen another for-profit charter, or, no, I'm sorry, they're all nonprofit, corporate charter behave like that. And I will not put my constituents in the northeast area subjected to that kind of management. It makes me very leery of what they were doing, and I've had nothing but response positively for my vote, especially for people that live in Boca and South Florida who have, who work with this school. I would feel differently if this was another local charter with that. And if your application reads one thing, and you promise to do something else, and you behave with letters that were sent to me and other board members, I cannot imagine you, I could ever hold you to your word, because it's, it wasn't professional, and it's not trustworthy. And so, that's my input for that, for this corporate charter.
Ms. Reynolds, did you have some comments?
I just had a question for Wes about the appeals process. It changed recently that, who pays for the appeals process now?
I don't believe that the appeals process has changed. I've, I've had that conversation with some of their representatives, who, who wanted to talk about, about the attorney fees. The statute still reads that if there is a contract dispute that is heard by an administrative law judge from the Division of Administrative Hearings, that the administrative law judge has the authority to award attorney fees. There is no provision similar to that in the statute having to do with the appeals. There is no administrative law judge involved. It goes to the, to the Charter Appeals Commission, and then is decided by the State Board of Education, based on a recommendation brought to them by the commission.
Ms. Whitney?
Well, as the recipient of the other letter, I, I found, I, I felt very threatened by it, to be quite honest. And I, I don't know anybody in Boca. But I know that the folks in Polk County, because I went ahead and I just put it on Facebook, because I felt like being open would probably be the safest thing for Sarah Fortney. And that's how unnerved I was, plus some other things that happened after that board meeting, like my house being cased by a strange SUV. But these are all letters from folks that have, yes. These are all letters from folks that supported my vote. So, and, and they took great time to reiterate the reason I got 61 percent. Thank you.
Yes.
This is going to be very disrespectful to the public to have this vote tonight, and not give anybody a chance to, to speak to us directly about it. You know, you all, you vote how, how you want, obviously, but I would certainly recommend that if someone's going to raise that tonight, that we then. How would I go about pushing it? Like, if someone raises that vote tonight, procedurally, what can I do? Let's, is there a tabling process? What, what is, how does that all work?
I think you can, if someone raises it tonight, you, you can, a, a member can ask to lay, to lay it on the table. I think that requires a second and, and a vote, to put it on the table. It, if you have, you can certainly have a vote tonight, Robert specifically allows it. You, you can have the vote tonight and live or die with it. If it's laid on the table or postponed, or nobody, there's a discussion, and the decision is made to put it off till the next meet, meeting, then I think the, the applicant, to the extent that they, that they're serious about appealing, they would have to go ahead and, and do what they're going to do. And, and once again, if it, if it came up at the next board meeting, and if the board at that time approved the application, then, you know, up to them whether to proceed, or just to take the, you know, smart money is, at that point, you, you go negotiate a contract.
But what, what does lay it on the table mean? Is that?
Laying, laying something on the table means that, that it is, action on it is postponed to another time. It is not something that, that school boards do very frequently. It's a parliamentary technique that is more, more typical of a, of a large parliamentary body. But I'll, I'll be happy to, to look at what Robert says for, for how school, small bodies can use it.
This is not something that has happened very frequently.
No, it is not. I'd be happy to have.
I mean, like, my, I mean, what, however we, however we do it, proceed procedurally. If someone raises that tonight, I'm going to urge that we put that vote off for, until, until the next, right, like I mean.
Yeah, again, procedurally, if a, if a board member wishes to make that motion, and we have a second, then we have to, we, we would have to, we cannot ignore that this evening. And, and a board member may choose to wait, given your suggestion, that's their prerogative. And you, it's your prerogative then to ask to make the motion that they laid aside, and then we can, we can proceed from there. Ms. Fort.
I, I wanted to say that after all of this, I, I went right to Superintendent Burden, and she sat with me for, I don't know, 30 minutes, Superintendent Burden. And I took her a copy of that letter, which she had not seen. And she explained her position on moving it to contract, which I apologize, as a board member, I did not understand that. But again, I did not trust them either, like I trusted our acceleration office, you know, 11 to 1 vote on that committee, and then the folks that actually live in that area, that I have received numerous communications from. So, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Burden for listening to me be scared, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. So, how important is the executive session?
Survive without it. It wouldn't just.
How long is it?
How, how long is the executive session?
I can make it two minutes.
Oh, yeah. So, we will.
That's my fortune. I don't know.
We will have the executive session in, in Mr. Bridges' conference room?
Yes.
And, and, and we'll postpone the start of the meeting until?
5:30.
5:30.